Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to get started. I want to welcome everyone to this hearing on the environmental justice rulemaking. Very happy to see that this is a well-attended hearing. Makes us feel good to be in the community and getting this feedback tonight. So we just want to give you a quick overview of how this is going to go. I'm going to read a brief statement that outlines kind of the basics of the environmental justice law and the rulemaking. We are also going to have a version of that statement translated into Spanish that will follow for folks who are more comfortable hearing it in that language. Then we're going to take comments. We have a full house tonight, so we have a three-minute limit on the comments. We're going to have to enforce that fairly strictly to make sure that we give everyone time to speak today. So here we go. Good evening. My name is Sean Moriarty. I am the Deputy Commissioner for the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, and I will be the Hearing Officer for this public hearing. This hearing is being held to receive oral and written comments on the proposed environmental justice rulemaking, which implements the environmental justice law. In September 2020, Governor Murphy signed New Jersey's landmark environmental justice law, the first of its kind and the nation's most empowering environmental justice legislation. The environmental justice law recognizes that because environmental standards are often formulated based on the effect pollution has on general populations spread over wide geographic areas, existing environmental laws fail to fully consider the impacts that certain pollution-generating facilities may have on their local communities. This failure has created pockets of high pollution across New Jersey, where many pollution-generating facilities have become concentrated in predominant minority and low-income communities that may lack the financial and political power to shape their local landscape and avoid disproportionate adverse impacts upon their public health and environment. At its most basic, the law requires us to consider whether a specific facility seeking a specific type of permit will contribute to environmental or public health stressors in an overburdened community, considering whether and how those stressors might have a disproportionate impact when compared to the overburdened community's neighbors. We're conducting a comparative analysis. The law requires the department to assess relevant environmental and public health stressors affecting New Jersey's overburdened communities and to deny or condition permits for certain facilities that cannot avoid causing or contributing to adverse environmental or public health stressors in that overburdened community. The law applies where three criteria are met. First, I ask folks to silence their phones, please. The facility is located or proposed to be located in an overburdened community. Second, the proposed or existing facility is one of the eight types of facilities listed in the Act. Those include major sources of air pollution and most solid waste facilities, as well as sewage treatment plants. Third, the applicant is seeking a type of permit or approval from the department covered by the Act, which are many of the permits the department issues. Where the environmental justice law applies, the applicant must submit an environmental justice impact statement, or EGIS, to the department evaluating how the proposed action, whether a new facility, the renewal of a major source air pollution permit, or expansion of an existing facility, would contribute to our environmental or public health stresses in the host OBC. The EGIS must also address how the applicant proposes to avoid, and where avoidance is not feasible, minimize such impacts, and under certain circumstances, provide a net environmental or public benefit to the overburdened community. The environmental justice impact statement is made available to the public in advance of a public hearing. To ensure meaningful public participation of the members of the overburdened community, an applicant is required to hold a public hearing in the overburdened community to present the proposed project and the environmental justice impact statement with a public comment period of at least 60 days to provide an opportunity for feedback from those most impacted by the proposed project. Notice and materials made available and language is accessible to community members, and the applicant will be required to address all comments received in writing. The department will evaluate the environmental justice impact statement and the information presented at the public hearing and through public comment to determine whether additional environmental or public health stressors expected from the actions set forth in the permit application would, together with the baseline environmental or public health stressors in the overburdened community, cause or contribute to adverse cumulative environmental or public health stressors that are higher than those of non-overburdened communities in the state. If this is the case, a disproportionate impact will be present, and the department may deny the permit or approve it with conditions to avoid or minimize those impacts. On June 6, 2022, the department proposed rules in New Jersey Register to implement the environmental justice law. The public comment period for this proposal closes on September 4, 2022. As indicated in the published notice, written comments can be submitted electronically to www nj.gov/dep/comments or to Melissa Betamarko at the address set forth in the notice. All relevant comments received during the public comment period will be addressed in New Jersey Register should the department adopt this rule. The public hearing on this rule proposal is being held in accordance with the Administrative Procedures Act, and as required, the department has provided additional notice of this public hearing through the department's website, through electronic mail, and through written communications with a number of news outlets. The goal of this hearing is to receive verbal comments into the record concerning the rule proposal. This hearing is not intended to be a question-and-answer session, but rather an opportunity for interested individuals like yourselves to voice your concerns and make suggestions regarding the rulemaking. If you have not yet done so, as we talked about earlier, please sign the attendance sheet and indicate whether you're interested in speaking tonight. We're going to go down that list in order, starting with folks who pre-registered online before the hearing. Now, after we listen to the translated statement, we'll begin calling individuals up. So Julie, please.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Sean Moriarty. Soy el comisionado adjunto del Departamento de Protección Ambiental de Nueva Jersey. Seré el oficial encargado de la audiencia pública. Esta audiencia se lleva a cabo para recibir comentarios orales y escritos sobre la propuesta de reglamentación de justicia ambiental, la cual aplica la Ley de Justicia Ambiental. El gobernador Murphy firmó en septiembre de 2020 la histórica Ley de Justicia Ambiental de Nueva Jersey, la primera de este tipo y la legislación de justicia ambiental más fuerte del país. La Ley de Justicia Ambiental reconoce que las leyes medioambientales existentes no tienen en cuenta planamente los impactos que ciertos establecimientos generadores de contaminación tienen en sus comunidades locales debido a que las normas ambientales suelen formularse con base en el efecto de la comunidad tiene sobre poblaciones generalmente dispersas en amplias zonas geográficas y que este fracaso ha creado focos de alta contaminación en toda Nueva Jersey, donde muchos establecimientos generadores de contaminación se han concentrado en comunidades principalmente minoritarias y de bajos ingresos, que pueden carecer de poder financiero y político para dar forma a su paisaje local y evitar impactos adversos y desproporcionados en la salud pública y en el medio ambiente. En su forma más básica, la ley nos obliga a considerar si un establecimiento específico que busca un tipo específico de permiso contribuirá a los factores de estrés ambiental o de salud pública en una comunidad sobrecargada, teniendo en cuenta que esos factores de estrés podrían tener un impacto desproporcionado al compararlos con los vecinos de la comunidad sobrecargada, algo así como un análisis comparativo. La ley requiere que el Departamento de Protección Ambiental de Nueva Jersey evalúe los factores de estrés ambiental y de salud pública más importantes que afectan las comunidades sobrecargadas de Nueva Jersey y que niegue o condicione los permisos de ciertos establecimientos que no pueden evitar, causar, o contribuir a los factores de estrés ambiental o de salud pública adversos en dichas comunidades. La ley se aplica si se cumplen tres criterios. Uno, el establecimiento se ubica o propone ubicarse en una comunidad sobrecargada (OBC por sus siglas en inglés). Dos, el establecimiento propuesto o existente es uno de los ocho tipos de establecimientos enumerados en la ley, como una fuente importante de contaminación atmosférica, un establecimiento de chatarra, o un vertedero. Tres, el solicitante busca un tipo de permiso o aprobación del Departamento de Protección de Nueva Jersey cubierto por la ley. Cuando se aplica la Ley de Justicia Ambiental, el solicitante deberá presentar una declaración de impacto sobre justicia ambiental (IGES por sus siglas en inglés) al Departamento de Protección de Nueva Jersey, donde se evalúe el modo en que la contaminación propuesta y hacia un nuevo establecimiento, la renovación de una nueva fuente importante de contaminación atmosférica, o la expansión de un establecimiento existente contribuirá a los factores de estrés ambiental y de salud pública en la comunidad. La IGES también debe abordar la forma en que el solicitante propone evitar y, cuando no sea posible evitarlo, minimizar dichos impactos y, en determinadas circunstancias, proporcionar un beneficio ambiental o de salud pública neto a la comunidad sobrecargada. La IGES se podrá a disposición del público antes de la audiencia pública. El solicitante debe organizar una audiencia pública en la comunidad afectada para presentar el proyecto propuesto a la IGES, a fin de garantizar una participación pública significativa de los miembros de la comunidad sobrecargada, incluyendo un periodo de comentarios públicos de al menos 60 días para dar la oportunidad de recibir comentarios de los más afectados por el proyecto propuesto. Las notificaciones y los materiales se podrán a disposición en los idiomas accesibles para los miembros de la comunidad, y el solicitante deberá responder a todos los comentarios El departamento evaluará la IGES para la información presentada durante la audiencia pública y a través de los comentarios del público para determinar si los factores adicionales de estrés ambiental o de salud pública que se esperan de las acciones en la solicitud de permiso junto con la línea de base de los factores de estrés que ya impactan a la comunidad causan o contribuyen a los factores de estrés ambientales o de salud pública acumulativos y adversos en esa OBC, que son más altos en comparación a las comunidades del estado que no son OBCs. De ser así, se producirá un impacto desproporcionado, y el departamento podrá denegar el permiso o aprobarlo con condiciones que eviten o minimicen esos impactos. El 6 de junio del 2022, el departamento propuso una serie de reglas en el Registro de Nueva Jersey para aplicar la Ley de Justicia Ambiental. El periodo de comentarios públicos de esta propuesta se cerran el 4 de septiembre de 2022. Como se indicó en el anuncio público, los comentarios por escrito deben enviarse electrónicamente a nuestra website, www nj.gov/dep/comments, o a Melissa Betamarko, depdocket 05-22-04, Office of Legal Affairs, Department of Environmental Protection, 401 East State Street, 7th Floor, Mail Code 401-04L, P.O. Box 402, Trenton, New Jersey, 08625-0402. Los comentarios relevantes que se reciban durante el periodo de comentarios públicos se incluirán en el Registro de Nueva Jersey en caso de que el departamento adopte esta propuesta regla. La audiencia pública sobre la propuesta de regla se celebra de acuerdo con la Ley de Procedimientos Administrativos, y como es debido, el departamento ha proporcionado una notificación adicional de esta audiencia pública a través de su página web, a través de correo electrónico, y mediante comunicación escrita con una serie de medios de comunicación. El objetivo de la audiencia es recibir comentarios verbales para que consten por escrito en relación con la propuesta de norma. La audiencia no pretende ser una sesión de preguntas y respuestas, sino más bien una oportunidad para que las personas interesadas expresen sus preocupaciones y sugerencias con respecto a la normativa. Si todavía no lo ha hecho, firme la hoja de asistencia e indique si está interesado en participar en la audiencia de esta noche. A partir de ahora, comenzaremos a invitar a las personas que han solicitado una oportunidad para participar. Cuando se pronuncie su nombre, acérquese al micrófono, diga su nombre, y te letrelo para el taquigrafo. Le pedimos que limite sus comentarios a tres minutos. Si hay tiempo adicional después de que todos hayan hablado, puede dar testimonio por tres minutos más. Gracias.
All right. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to now begin inviting individuals who have recused to speak. When your name is called, I ask you to please step to the microphone, state your name, and spell it for the sonographer. I'd also like to note that please feel free to provide testimony in any language that you are comfortable providing it in. It is our job to translate your testimony, not your job to translate it into English, if that's not what you'd like to do. So we're going to start with folks who signed up online. We're going to ask you again to limit your comments to three minutes. We have a 30-second sign. Given the volume of folks here today, we're going to have to be pretty strict with that, so I do apologize in advance if I need to cut anyone off. If there is additional time after everyone's spoken, we'll certainly invite folks up for additional testimony. So the first name we have on the list, these are online folks, so if you don't wish to testify, please just indicate so. Amy Hansen.
Ana Baptista, that's A-N-A-B-A-P-T-I-S-T-A. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on the EJ rules today. I'm a professor at the New School University, and I'd like to recognize first the DEP staff for the hard work they put into developing these rules. Having worked on cumulative impacts for many years with EJ communities, we understand that this rule goes a long way towards implementing the commitments that were stated in the EJ law that passed in September of 2020, and the rules that have been put out are based on empirically sound and practical methodology, and it uses state-of-the-art knowledge and accessible data to produce these relative measures of cumulative impact. So notwithstanding the generally positive view of these proposed rules, I just offer a few comments in the hopes of further clarifying and strengthening the rule so that it withstands the test of time and does not get weakened in any way over many administrations. First and foremost, I want to make sure that the compelling public interest exemption should only be applied in very limited cases where the applicant can present verifiable evidence that the proposed use is an essential service to the community that is being impacted. And I concur with the department's exclusion of economic factors and considerations because, primarily, the DEP is not in the business of verifying economic exemptions, and it will effectively weaken this rule and leave a major loophole, allowing business as usual, which was not the intention of this law. So leaving the exclusions for economic interests in place is really, really important. Secondly, I think it's really important to ensure that the definition of a facility's contribution to what creates adverse cumulative stressors is much more well-defined so that we can interpret that any detectable absolute amount of a pollutant or density increase related to the affected stressor categories would constitute a contribution to or creation of adverse environmental and public health stressors in overburdened communities. And secondly, the stipulation for modeling of a facility's contribution to those stressors is changed so that it's not just modeling, because in many cases it's difficult to model contributions, but that there's an assessment, and this assessment could be a simple description of the increases, the detectable increases from a facility. It could be the increase in densities of facilities, so it doesn't necessarily have to be modeling that is required to show what the impact is or could be that a facility is contributing to the stressor categories. And finally, I'll just mention that the stressor categories need to have pollutant amounts that correspond with each stressor, because it's not necessarily clear, things like VOCs, which stressor category does that apply to. So it'd be really important to have some facility contribution list of potential pollutants. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll just remind folks that since we are trying to be strict with the three minutes, you are more than welcome to provide written testimony, and we are going to be having a virtual hearing tomorrow, which will be the fourth of these sessions we'll have. So if you don't get an opportunity to speak today or you want to speak more, please join us again tomorrow. Isabel Molina? Do you wish to provide testimony? Are you here?
Hi. Could I defer to community members first?
Sure, absolutely. I'll put you at the back end. Thank you. Hara Mir?
My name is Hara Mir, H-E-R-A-M-I-R, and I'm a resident of Jersey City. Thank you to the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection for proposing these new rules implementing the environmental justice law. This new law is a crucial first step towards environmental justice to help protect future generations from the harms of pollution in the air that we breathe. Environmental justice is about our children's health, our family's health, and it's about our neighbor's health. As we've seen in this pandemic, our neighbor's health can very much affect our own health. Further studies show that exposure to overplanted air leads to chronic diseases like asthma and lung and heart problems. It leads to developmental harms to our children and reproductive harms to our families. Pollution is a slow cut to our health that gets deeper and deeper every day with increasing cumulative impacts. By setting a cap on new pollutants in orbiting communities like ours, we are beginning to take the first steps to prevent these cuts from getting even deeper. So I live in the West Side neighborhood of Jersey City, which borders the Hackensack River, just a few miles downwind of Newark, where we are today. While communities in Newark are the most harmed by the level of industrial pollution here, people in my neighborhood, which is also a majority Black, Latinx, and Asian neighborhood, are very much affected as well. We are harmed when polluters begin emitting harmful gases and chemicals into the environment just a few miles from our homes. Too often, my neighbors and I become aware of the polluted air around us when we can no longer bear to breathe because of the toxic smells outside. We have to stay indoors and keep our windows shut for the night to breathe comfortably. Any economic exemption to allow new industrial plants to be built goes against the very spirit and legislative intent of this law. It will welcome industrial corporations to use economic exemptions as loopholes by claiming a promise of jobs, but never be accountable to the very communities they are in and the workers whose very well-being and livelihood are at stake because of the pollutants emitted at these plants. In this law, you are tasked to prioritize the economy of our people's health, which cannot afford any new industrial plants polluting our air. I want to thank you again for your work to create these rules and the many community leaders here today that worked to pass the law, but allowing any economic exemption will undo that work. And yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you.
My name is Cynthia Mejón, and it's spelled C-Y-N-T-H-K-I-A, and last name M-E-L-L-O-N. I am a resident of Newark for many years in the East Ward, which is one of the most environmentally burdened neighborhoods in the nation. I am the appointed chair of the Newark Environmental Commission, a role I have served for about six years, which I share with a co-chair. I was appointed by Mayor Baraka to that position in 2015, and I am also chair of the Environmental Justice Committee of the Latino Action Network of New Jersey and serve on the Board of New Jersey Environmental Justice Alliance. Some years ago, after a meeting of the People's Organization for Progress, which is a strong organization in Newark, a number of what we call old-timers, a number of senior workers, began to talk about their work life when they worked in my neighborhood, when there were many industrial plants there, and they talked about all of the things, the materials they were ordered to bury in the ground and dump in the river. And they said that that had haunted them for decades because they knew it would come back on us. And it does, and it has. I'm strongly supporting that we not go in the direction of economic exemptions to this law. We've been living for decades that situation, and basically, that's what I have to say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mejón, I apologize for mispronouncing your name, and I apologize to everyone else whose names I will mispronounce for the rest of the night. Anjuli Ramos?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Anjuli Ramos. That's A-N-J-U-L-I, last name Ramos, R-A-M-O-S. I'm the New Jersey CR Club State Director. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. Thank you, New Jersey DEP, for hosting four public hearings on this very important rule. I'm just going to try to read from my phone, and I'm going to try to be as quick as possible, so bear with me. Well, in reality, I'm not going to read. I'm just going to speak from my heart. The environmental justice law is groundbreaking. It's an amazing step, and New Jersey is leading the conversation. And I just want to start by saying thank you, New Jersey DEP, but also thank you to the environmental justice community organizations that have been leading this conversation and bringing the terrible pollution and public health impacts that the communities in New Jersey have been suffering for centuries and decades of just prioritizing economic development and industry over the health and the environment of the citizens of this state. I echo my colleagues' sentiments in terms of the economic exemptions. We shouldn't really be considering any type of economic scenarios for industry here because this rule is really about human decency. It's about the state recognizing that there is a problem and that we're starting to fix it. So economy, sorry, and profit, it just doesn't have any room into this. CR Club will be providing written technical comments, but I just want to touch upon two very important things for us. The public notice, as stated in the rule, it just says up to 200 feet to provide notice to the neighboring communities. In reality, it should really be way more than that, at a minimum, 1,000 feet, and the reason for that is very technical. The New Jersey DEP, when they're evaluating an air pollution control permit, conducts an air dispersion modeling and a risk assessment, and that eventually informs the actual permits. It informs the emission rates for each air contaminant that that facility is allowed to emit, and so in that dispersion modeling, the department goes as far as up to five kilometers, which, if you can merge that into feet, that's 16,000 feet. And in my personal experience of what I've seen, these evaluations often show health impacts up to thousands and thousands of feet from the center of the facility. So the least that, thank you, the least the New Jersey DEP can do is provide notice to what their actual evaluations go up to, so thousands and thousands of feet. My other technical point is thank you, DEP, for including this whole particulate matter as one of the environmental stressors, because that's one of the things that the USCPA has ignored for a very long time, and it's actually the biggest risk driver of cancer for the state. So thank you so much for including that, and I'm just going to stop, but I will provide more further details in the comments, and thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
How you doing? Marcus Sibley. I am the chairman of the New Jersey State Conference NAACP Environmental Climate Justice Committee, as well as the chairman of the New Jersey Progressive Equitable Energy Coalition. We will be providing, NJ Peak will be providing technical comments prior to the deadline, so that will be coming. I just wanted to speak from the heart really quickly, and again, I want to thank all the community groups that have been making sure that this is a priority for our state. So I'd like to thank each and every community group that has been pushing the line and holding the line. I'd like to thank all the other groups, statewide groups that have been making sure to utilize their resources to make sure that this is a priority. I grew up in Newark. I went to high school right down the street. I used to be a camp counselor at a program right in the Iron Brown section, and what I know now, I didn't know then, I didn't realize, all of the things that were in that environment was impacting those young children. So when we speak about what we want to do for the world, and when we speak about the legacy we want to leave, Newark, as many cities all across our state, have beautiful children who deserve a beautiful future. So the point of this rule, and the point of all of us being here today, is to ensure that these young people have a chance. It shouldn't be anything that prevents our young, beautiful, future leaders from being able to achieve their highest goals. So this is why when we come here tonight, we're saying the nation is looking at New Jersey. We have one of the most progressive environmental justice laws in the nation. We have one of the most progressive environmental justice laws in the nation, and the nation is watching. But what they're looking to see is, is it symbolic? Are we really going to work to close the loopholes? Are those could's going to be shoulds and shall? Are we going to make sure that people can't just pay their $1,000 an hour attorneys to find the loopholes and continue to poison our children? So what I'm trying to say is that we have a responsibility. We have a responsibility to make sure that there aren't loopholes. I know all of you on this stage. I know your character, but I don't know who your successors will be. So that's why I need to make sure that the law is strong even long after you're gone. And that's what we have to do. So what we have to ask ourselves every day is, what's at stake? What leaders, doctors, lawyers, professors that we have in this room who are being sidelined because of the air that they breathe, the water that they drink, the food that they eat that comes out of the soil? So I just want to leave with saying that NJ Peak is going to continue to work with the DEP, but we're going to hold you accountable to make sure that this is the strongest possible law that there can be. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Brittany Timberlake. I'm a New Jersey State Assemblywoman and one of the prime sponsors of the bill. I was willing to sit here all night while everybody in this room spoke before I even took the privilege to come forward on the microphone myself because I believe very deeply in people power, and I believe very deeply in the community. We are very proud of this being the strongest environmental justice bill in the country. I have spoken to people from around the country who have even touted this as a piece of legislation to be modeled after in other states. There is a lot of economic interest, however. Have you ever heard statistics about, you know, Black and Brown people are more susceptible to diabetes, or to asthma, or to heart disease? Well, what if I challenged today that it's not like some genetic condition that makes us more susceptible to these things, but it's where our communities are located? And it's where, it's where we have higher carbon emissions. It's where our water has been polluted. It's where we have highways that have been run through our communities and split our communities. I hail from East Orange, which is one of those communities that was literally split in two, where they moved, they actually moved the graveyard and got rid of houses all to run the Garden State Parkway in 280. Cancer. Here in Newark, there was actually two children that I've heard about this year alone who have died from asthma. So I come here today to say to please the intent of the bill as a bill sponsor, and I will also, out of respect and formality, you will receive my comments in a more formal way, but like the gentleman who spoke before me, who was wonderful, I wanted to speak from my heart. I'm asking you today to put people before profit. Do not expand, do not expand that definition of what public interest is. We specifically wrote it for environmental, health, or safety. Tying in and saying an economic public interest is a giant loophole that will kill children. It will kill adults. It will kill our elders. And whatever the corporate interest is, is absolutely not worth that. And I will be the biggest adversary against that if it is to occur. And thank you very much for your work.
Thank you, Assemblywoman.
Thank you for being here today. I'm with the Sierra Club of Northern New Jersey. I'm the Climate Issues Chair. Can you hear me? I'm the Climate Issues Chair. And our group, in addition to the state, Anjuli, thank you, believes strongly in supporting Newark and the towns around it for environmental justice reasons. I went to a number of marches, demonstrations, gatherings, whatever you really want to call them, and in a couple of those, there were these beautiful children, they had asthma. I think that what we could be doing in Newark with some of the projects under, including, that are being considered right now, is to increase the illness level. It's not a small increase. And I think I'm concerned that the rhetoric on the political side isn't coming to fruition, or runs the risk of not coming to fruition, on the implementation side, whether it be the master plan, or whether it would be other items and different departments within the state of New Jersey. There's one administration. So I ask you to look at this environmental issue, this health issue, without other issues compounding it. It wasn't written that way, as the councilwoman said, Assemblywoman said. So please look at the children. Remember the last time you were at a YMCA or some organization, and you saw a bunch of five-year-olds lined up, or four, or six? There's nothing more beautiful, all of them. And it's destructive, it's difficult to see that when my eyes opened up and took a look. So spend some time there and see what you see. And go to bat for these people because overwhelmingly, without Hudson County, without Essex, without Newark, without Jersey City, it would have been a very different, a very, very different political environment right now. And I think you have to look in that direction a little bit. So thank you for listening. I'm very sad from what I see all over, but I owe it to the people around me to keep on trucking. Please take your jobs very seriously. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ray Cantor?
My name is Ray Cantor. I am with the New Jersey Business and Industry Association. At previous hearings, I talked about the rule not having any allowance to consider economic impacts, therefore addressing the low-income issues of overburdening communities and unemployment issue of being a stressor. And I talked about the over-prescriptive nature of these regulations. Tonight, I want to talk about the lost opportunity. We can have economic growth, jobs, and clean communities altogether. We all want, you know, healthy, safe, clean communities. Nobody wants stressors in the communities, and absolutely nobody wants a disproportionate amount of stressors in their communities. We have the opportunity to make things better, but this rule represents a lost opportunity. Rather than having businesses work with communities, work with neighbors, try to improve things having a net environmental benefit, what the rule does is fall back on what DEP has done poorly in so many different rules in the past, and that's an overly prescriptive command-and-control type of scenario. We have the ability to address real problems, make real changes, real improvements in communities, but again, the rule does not allow for that to happen. What is going to happen is you will not see new facilities coming into these communities. And by the way, we're not just talking about what we normally consider to be an EJ community. The way the rule, the law is drafted, over two-thirds of the state's population is in the overburdening community. And new facilities are not garbage dumps necessarily, you know, they can be, but they're also colleges, apartment buildings, Title V facilities could be any clean facility that just happens to have a Title V permit. So the rule is overly broad in how it applies. So you're not going to see these facilities locate, you're not going to see facilities that meet all environmental standards, you know, expand. You're not going to see, or what you will see is a lot of facilities that are already there, seeking renewals, not being able to meet the requirements. You're going to see jobs move out of the state or not come into the state. And the benefits that these facilities can bring to communities...
Ladies and gentlemen, Dave, come on. Let people speak, please. Thank you.
The benefits that these facilities can bring to communities by working with them, by bringing environmental improvements, by improving the communities, are not going to happen again because the rule does not allow for that cooperative relationship to happen. So again, we would just ask you to rethink how the rule is structured, require environmental benefits, require improvements to be done, but don't be overly prescriptive. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Chris Tendazo? Chris Tendazo? Pardon? Okay. Thank you. Patricia C.
Everybody's going to hear this. Thank you. You ready? Okay. Thank you so much for having us tonight and having us, I mean, giving us a space to speak. My name is Patricia Cortado, pronouns she/her/hers. I'm a queer Filipino immigrant from Irvington, New Jersey, and now I live in Newark, in Down Bottom. So we can move farther along understanding what frontline communities need. Our democracy has a close relationship with risk, and it's been challenged time and time again. First, we always need community-led solutions. We don't want anything that's going to put money over our lives. We don't want anything that looks good on paper because the standards are already questionable, to be quite honest. We don't want anything that's going to take more from us, period. No more extractions of dirty labor from workers with just any jobs that they offer No more extractions of culture from us with the greenwashing methods that are supposed to keep us close to the land. No more extractions of families from communities when we are subjected to our slow deaths because of the toxic chemicals we breathe and drink in communities where we teach, live, pray, play, love, and grow. You need to put value in the local power. Let community leaders organize the voices of the people. Give us enough time to gather our thoughts. Let us develop our collective needs before any decisions are made, before any new facility proposed to build in overburdening communities like mine. And yes, facilities equals newer polluting technology, like gasification of sludge from Aris Corporation. Think about the act of solidarity and what that it means. We know that the best partners are those that are committed to protecting and defending our communities from big polluters like PVSC, Covanta, Darling, it stinks so much, and many more in our ward, not to mention the 30-plus planes and 100-plus trucks every hour over us, by us, all around, that our house shakes. It's suffocating, there's no escape. We are overburdened. We are overburdened. And knowing another facility want to be my neighbor, but they need to ask for a special permission to poison us is not okay. We deserve to live like full people. When the laws are written down, make sure it's the strongest ones. Can we know how close we're going to live to the facilities when they come, newer old? Can we find a way to show that? Can we make sure they are reflective of the healthy relationship that you have with the people who live and work here in New Jersey, especially in EJ communities? Help change the material conditions that we are subjected to because they decrease the value of our lives. Show us what you're really willing to do for us.
Carly Sanchez?
My name's Carly Sanchez, C-A-R-L-Y, she/her. I am a researcher at the Tishman Center and also a master's student at the New School, and I've been studying environmental policy and sustainability management there. I'm just going to keep it brief so that we can leave it for community members for the remainder of the time. But I just wanted to start off by saying, haven't there been enough exceptions for these corporations and these dirty businesses? The fact that this bill even exists is, as someone had already mentioned, admitting that there is a problem with environmental justice in this community. And on top of that, we're just trying to, you know, make exceptions for those who are going to profit from this, but those who are going to profit from this aren't the ones living in those communities. Don't have their children in those communities, don't have those family in their communities. And I'm just going to leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Guillermo Nino?
My name is Guillermo Nino. I'm going to explain for you in English. G-U-I-L-E-R-M-O. Last name is Nino, N-I-N-O. He's been a member of I-O-U-E, Local 825, for over 22 years. Over the years, I've been an operator of heavy equipment. I've become an expert in excavators, demolition, and construction of natural gas, among other areas of construction. I'm here to express my concerns about this environmental justice law. The implementation of these regulations seems to be under pressure and senseless. For a long time, the infrastructure of our communities has been neglected. These regulations will delay even more the necessary improvements and/or the construction of new schools, water supply, water systems, supermecados, hospitals, and transport centers. People need good jobs to support their families. Many residents have received good opportunities, labor opportunities, but they are afraid of closing and resigning because they can't accomplish the improvements or expansions required in the future. Of course, we need to find ways to save and protect the environment. We also need to maintain the economic stability of the communities that these regulations want to protect. This process needs to be more inclusive and integrate all the aspects and viewpoints of our communities. y puntos de vista de nuestras comunidades. Muchas gracias. Feliz noche.
Donald De August?
Thank you for letting me speak here tonight. My name is Donald De Augustin. I live in Hillside, New Jersey. I represent Millwright Local 715, and I'm also a councilman in my town. I've been a resident, I actually was born in Newark, I stayed here until I was 12 years old, and I moved to Hillside, not very far away. And the environmental impact of projects, I worry about because my family, I raised my family, and I'm still here. But I also have a concern for opportunities for guys at my union and the rest of the building trades. You know, good-paying jobs with a future, with health coverage, in an area that you're going to desire to live in, we need these opportunities. And now, it seems like my way of making a living and many other of the members of the building trades have been put aside and not considered, and these projects have gone away that would have been gainful employment for new generations of people that will, you know, have a career and be able to feed their families. That's all we're asking for, and I believe with the sciences that are involved now, that we can have good development and safe environments. But each group has to come together to put the will to make sure that that happens. To get away with, you know, just blanking and say, "I'm going to build this," and then the answer is no. Well, what are you going to build, and how are you going to protect the environment? These environment, these jobs are good, they pay well, they have good benefits, and it's also opportunity for the future for young people that not every kid goes to college, you know? Believe it or not, some of them like to work with their hands, and we got to have those opportunities for them. So when we consider these laws, the implications, and I, you know, I respect the environmental people for their fever about the position that they have, but we have to consider the big picture and the whole thing. It's not just about, you know, who's going to profit. Companies are going to make money, but if you can make a living and support your family with that, that's a step in the right direction. And the two parts can't be opposite. We need to come together, get the will to do these jobs correctly, safely, environmentally, but we need to do the jobs. Thank you.
Everybody will have an opportunity to speak.
Good evening. My name is John Alvarado. I have been a member of Local 825 IUE for more than 20 years. I've become versed in an expert in excavation, demolition, and pipeline construction, as well as other areas in the construction industry. I am here today to express my concern about the state's environmental justice law, which I feel that have been hastily rolled out and rushed to the forefront. For too long, the basic infrastructure of our communities has been neglected, and these rules will further delay the necessary upgrades and/or the construction of new schools and other infrastructure projects that we can all benefit as a whole. So, people are, just like my counterpart before me, he said people are in need of good jobs to provide for their families, and, which will give many residents throughout the communities opportunities, financial opportunities, and also for their families. And without the fear of businesses going under and layoffs, they will have the protection that is provided. So, and of course, we have to find ways to safeguard the environment and also have to maintain the economic stability of the communities at hand that these rules are set to protect. The, this process needs to be much more inclusive and truly integrate all aspects and points of view of our communities and also any party. So, I do appreciate, thank you for your time, and have a good evening. Thank you, that's it.
Thank you, sir. Ayman Ismail?
Thank you for pronouncing it correctly, I appreciate it. Salam alaykum, my name is Ayman Ismael. I was born in Jersey City, grew up in Newark, went to elementary school in Newark, have three siblings, three out of four of us have asthma. You can hear it in my voice a little bit, I've just always been affected by it. My brother used to, both my brothers used to be lifeguards at the pool at Hayes', and for people who here, they might know that they found Agent Orange in that water years after the fact. They closed it down, we never knew why. We used to play in the dirt at Riverbank Park. Riverbank Park also closed down, we didn't know why, found out much later that they found a high amount of dioxin in the dirt. So, we are all suffering through it already, but now I have other things on my mind. I have a son now, and I have another baby on the way, and we still live in Newark, I live on Van Buren Street, close to Ferry Street, in the Ironbound. I have to make the decision now, do I want my son and my baby girl, when she's born, to breathe this air? Do I want her to play in this dirt? It's really a hard decision to make. I think any parent can empathize with the fact that you are responsible for your child's health, you have to make the right decisions for them. You're not always going to make the right decision, but in this case, I'm at a loss. And so I want to ask you guys to help me make this decision a little bit easier. I'm okay with living in a place and supporting a place that is willing to acknowledge what my family has gone through, but make it a safer, cleaner place for the future generations. Now, what I find unacceptable is like trying to figure out what amount of pollution is okay. What are we willing to put people through? What are we willing to let people like me who have asthma because they grew up here do? You know what I'm trying to say? So what I would hope for is for a way that we can work together, find a way to create jobs in this green space where we don't have to be hurt for it. I would love to find a way where we can work with the unions to create a space for economic growth, because Newark needs economic growth, in a way that doesn't also hurt the people. It stinks really bad. It smells really bad, so much so that I had to convince my sister to come back to Newark to visit her nephew. She said I didn't want to come. Bring him up to Boston, where it smells better. And I kind of know what she means, I kind of understand where she's coming from. And I don't want that to happen anymore. I would love to tell her and get on the phone and say, "Hey, this EJ bill passed, people are going to enforce it the correct way. It's getting better." But I guess that depends on your decision, and I hope you make the right one. Thank you so much.
Drew Curtis?
My name is Drew Curtis. I live in the Ironbound section of Newark, which has the sad distinction of being one of the most polluted zip codes in this country. Because of this, I'm a huge supporter of the environmental justice law. First, a thank you to Governor Murphy, all the state legislators who passed this, just like Assemblywoman Timberlake, who's here tonight. Thank you to all the DEP staff for all your hard work in writing these rules and getting us to this point. I know you'll have put in a lot of hours there, but most of all, thank you to the organizers, activists, and residents who have worked tirelessly for well over a decade to get this I'll pause briefly to honor all of our community members who have passed away before seeing this law passed, particularly during COVID. Now, let's pass the strongest possible bill and set the bar for the rest of this country. No economic exception in this law. An economic exception would effectively gut this bill. Don't do it. People's lives are at stake, and we cannot sacrifice their lives anymore just for the sake of capitalism and greedy polluting corporations. Our community includes workers, and I want to see good union jobs too, but we can create those jobs by building facilities that aren't killing us with pollution. Also, let's make sure we have strong and robust public notice. Let's go out as far as possible with the notice that we can do, too. Pollution travels. When I'm at home over on the western side of the Ironbound, and the winds blow in the wrong way, I'm going to be smelling stuff from Dramus Avenue already there, from the fat rendering plant. So let's make sure we go out far and include tenants too, who typically don't get those notices at homes too, but let's make sure they're getting posted as well. Let's put these in libraries and community centers in the neighborhood, also in social media and traditional media, especially our local multilingual sources. And then last, let's make sure we update the law to include new terminology and technology. There's always, polluters are always out there developing new ways of doing things, but they still pollute. For example, a newer technology is gasification. Let's make sure that's in there too, because gasification is, sounds pretty close to incineration. We don't want that killing us either. So let's make sure the law covers everything. Thank you, and good night.
Kent Fairfield? I apologize the...
Good evening, thank you. My name's Kent Fairfield, K-E-N-T-F-A-I-R-F-I-L-D. I'm privileged to be a resident of Maplewood, New Jersey. Some people don't know it's adjacent to Newark, though we're privileged to be that far from the worst of Ironbound District. I come to you with a long history being in business and then a second career as a professor of sustainability in a business school at Fairleigh Dickinson University. And I've known over the years that enlightened companies, and for that matter enlightened government agencies, could be seen as having three key facets to be concerned with. What is going on with the environment, with the people around them, and with the economic prosperity, often summarized as planet, people, and profit. None of these has to prevail over everything else, but the Department Environmental Protection surely was formed to represent New Jersey taxpayers with emphasis on the environment and the people. I know you wouldn't serve in this area if you didn't believe that. This particular law strikes me because, and it is to our credit and yours, that it's the strongest in the country, but now we get down to the nitty-gritty of writing regulations and what some have called a loophole for economic exceptions, sometimes it has the way of becoming a massive tunnel to drive a truck through. If you know the history of economic development efforts on cities and states for the last 50 years, thousands of projects have been sold as, "Oh, this is going to help the people of the area, trust us, after we build this thing." "Oh, 500 people are going to be building it." Well, let's hear it for the building trades that do that, yeah. How many permanent jobs? It's just a natural reality of how things happen. So, I hope that you can fulfill what Governor Murphy has offered for us here, who came in to job, first really public service job, I think with a lot of integrity, who set out terrific goals to help our state, and had the nerve to pass this particular bill. And as most of you know, he made a point of coming to sign the bill right here in Ironbound, which to me sends a loud and clear message that he's concerned about this. So if we're willing to back off and provide for exceptions that are way too big to be meaningful in the bill, I think that's really sad. I think you have a real dilemma in the work you do, thank you, because you want to do what's right for the whole state, but you also have to go home at night and look your family, your spouse, your children in the eye and say, "I took a stand for what was really important for the environment, and we know about climate change being a crisis, for the people of this state, many of whom are suffering off terribly, like some of those who gave personal testimony." And so that you can say, "Yes, we're going to continue to foster the environment, the economy, but we've done what's really most important."
Chloé Desir?
Hello, my name is Chloé, C-H-L-O-E-D-E-S-I-R, and I'm an environmental justice organizer with the Ironbound Community Corporation, and I have been working in Newark for almost a year now, and it's been quite an eye-opening experience. I am an Elizabeth resident, I've also lived in Hillside, but I have some notes. I'm going to be quick, but I'm going to make sure they are a statement that needs to be heard, starting off with the need for a more efficient public notice. It took the work of organizers like me and my colleagues to show you that people care about this. Definitely think that more people would be here if there was better, efficient notice from the job that you guys have that should be to do that. But what we're really here for is that, the fact that it took over 10 years just to get this EJ law out, and the simple ask was for clean air. Too long, way too long, and I don't think that's fair to anyone that's living in these overburdened communities. And to make matters worse, we're here because we want to add an economic interest, which is what is, realistically speaking, pushing people out of the communities already with these buildings that we're building right now that are not affordable for the people that are living here. And I just want to be clear as well, we do not want to deter business from coming into these communities, but I have no interest, nor does anyone else, in investing my money into them if they don't want to satisfy the needs of the community they're occupying. And if you say that we're pushing for these jobs, well, are these jobs pushing to pay for the medical bills and efficient health insurance that are going to be needed? And that's the tea, thank you.
Irma Hernandez?
Muy buenas noches a todos. Mi nombre es Irma Hernández y vengo con mi comunidad de ICC. Bueno, mi humilde opinión es que no estamos aquí para pelear o debatir. Yo tengo un hijo con asma y veo las crisis de mi hijo y pues sí, como mamá pues se sufre. Pero pues también es bueno que yo veo que nos traen fuentes de trabajo y no es malo porque los necesitamos. Pero también las personas que quisieran invertir y traernos esas fuentes de trabajo, yo creo que viéndolo del lado humano tenemos también hoy la ciencia muy avanzada y se puede invertir en la ciencia para no dejar un New York más limpio sino hablando de un planeta más limpio porque con el tiempo pues si seguimos así, si no ayudamos a invertir, no sé, estudiar algo como la ciencia este, para dejar un planeta más limpio, ¿qué le vamos a dejar a nuestros descendientes? Y yo creo que pues viéndolo por el lado humano pues sí, no, las personas que quisieran invertir, que se apoyaran mucho sobre la ciencia, invertir en eso para dejar un planeta más limpio.
We have been working tirelessly as an environmental justice organization and as community members, trying to let everyone know in our community that this is happening in the first place. We need, in this EJ law also, for more folks to know, for this not to be the groundwork of two weeks of trying to hand out flyers, talking to friends, to friends to friends, to try to get as many folks to know that this is happening tonight in Newark and to show up with such a strong presence like we did tonight. With this EJ law, I wanted to bring just a small anecdote from this morning. One of the parts of my job is to do environmental justice toxic tours, and we did this with the Newark Office of Sustainability this morning with high school students from all over the wards of Newark. We talked to folks and gave them a tour on the bus to talk about the history of contamination that we have particularly in the east ward, the Ironbound, and in the south ward, going as far back as the 1960s, as we heard in other testimony of Agent Orange, of dioxin. And currently, we also were able to show that we have already three fracked gas power plants, an incinerator that we have been fighting for over 30 years and have not seen agency protection against. And so this is several decades of health impacts, all saturated in one community. I don't feel the need to have to define any further what an overburdened community is. That is what this bill is meant to do. We explained the different health impacts, and so we've heard a lot about this today also, which is again something that I know we don't have to explain to the NJDEP, but maybe perhaps some of the folks who are here urging for a small percentage of jobs that may be offered to community members as the biggest reason to be against this law. And so some of the health impacts is the 25% of Newark residents, the young people born here who develop asthma, the cancer rates, the reproductive issues that are, for example, myself, if I were to consider having a child in the future, I may have difficulty doing so, gynecological issues that go grossly underreported, especially for women of color, all due to these emission rates. And so these are all the things that we are explaining to high school students who will leave this bus ride, this short tour, and go back home to Newark. We also explained how important it is to be engaged in community like we are showing up tonight to fight for what is a protection like the environmental justice bill. We do not want economic exception. This is not in the interest of even the workers who don't live in Newark. The folks who are working in these industries are also exposed to these emissions, and so that's why I am again repeating all of the different health impacts that happen from these emissions. It is extortion to have to choose between some jobs, which by the way, the local incinerator only employs 20 people from Newark. We don't care about 20 jobs. We want our health, for our future and for ourselves. Thank you.
I have a little trouble with the writing on this one. I believe Ron Toft?
My name is Reverend Ronald Toft. I am representing Green Faith, and I'm also the second vice chair of the New Jersey Black Issues Convention. The organizations that I represent support this bill 100%. And the reason they support this bill 100% is because it creates an equal playing field for those that are building and those that live in the community. They can no longer come and build something and then just have the community stand by. Now, and even, I heard somebody from the union talk about jobs, but now they just have to have to come and they have to let the community know what type of jobs is coming to the community, and they have to talk to the residents of the community. And they just can't come and slap something in the community and then say, "Our community is here." Now, this bill means that they have to work together, they have to bring the community in, and they have to consider how the community is, how the community is living. And they also have to provide an education, they also have to provide training for the community. So this bill is more important to the community than anything else, and not only that, they have to consider the health needs of the community. I also represent the black church, so they can no longer come and build stuff for the community and not consider the residents that live there. So this bill is so important that, and brings everybody to the playing field and makes sure everybody have to work together and consider what they're building, and it becomes a benefit not only to the builders, but a benefit to those that live in the community. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Reverend. Dan Ortega? Melanie Reyes?
Scared the uni folks might know my name. Y'all got my bag, y'all got my bag, alright. I need to bring this down a little bit. Bring my mask down? Okay. Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for having me. Thank you, NJDEP. Thank you so much for being here. My name is Christian Rodriguez. My pronouns are they, she. I was born and raised right here in Newark, New Jersey, right around the corner and less than a mile from Covanta, the garbage incinerator, right around the corner from PVSC, the biggest sewage processing plant that often emits bad smells. And they also wanna propose another power plant. I also live right next door to the second biggest port on the east coast, next to a major airport, so I'm often being interrupted by planes that fly overhead. Not to mention the river near my home is contaminated. It's taken so many years to come up with a plan to clean it up, right? Because there weren't any regulations in the past, right, to avoid these contaminants. I swam in contaminated swimming pool that had to be closed down because of dioxin. Anybody swam in haze pool, you were swimming in contaminated waters, if you didn't know. I live near a super fun site, and we have over 100 brownfield sites in my neighborhood. So when we say enough is enough, and this is what we mean, we're overburdened with so much pollution that so many of us, like Amen, like so many people here, like so many of the kids that come to the farm and try to farm and garden, you know, we all have asthma, we all have other health ailments. Like I mentioned before, there wasn't any strong policies that protected the neighborhood, but this EJ law is a step in the right direction. It's gonna help us, you know, as long as we keep the economic exceptions out of it, right? Because time and time again, we've been promised jobs, but often, we get the crappy, unclean jobs, right? A lot of the times, the jobs that are promised are promised to other people that often don't live in our neighborhoods, right? So... Sorry, lost my train of thought. We've been promised jobs, or in addition to a few jobs, those few jobs, they definitely don't outweigh the magnitude of the effects the pollution has had on my life and thus far anybody else who's lived in Ironbound or Newark, for that matter. You know, we need an EJ bill to stay as is with no added economic exceptions. A few jobs in our community doesn't outweigh the health of the kids and the people in my community. Dirty industries are not the kind of jobs we want to encourage in communities like Newark, in EJ communities. We deserve good, healthy, clean, dignified jobs. And lastly, we should not have to choose between health environment and jobs, healthy environment and jobs. Like, why is it that we have to choose between me being able to live, you know, clean air and then the few 10 jobs that you may promise to my community, right? That doesn't make any sense. Ethically, it doesn't make any sense. Also, we need to push out public notices, the last thing, push out public notices in more, in more live spaces, right? Pay local grassroots organization. We spent so many hours trying to organize all these people here, we, you know, it's just, it's, it's just so much. So that's some of the things that I wanted to, you know, address here. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. What do we want? When do we want it? ¿Qué queremos? ¿Cuándo lo queremos? We want clean jobs. Alright, thank you.
Thomas Ikeda?
Hello, my name is Thomas Ikeda, spelled I-K-E-D-A. I'm a researcher with the Tischman Environment and Design Center at the New School. I'll keep it... I'll keep my comments here short so that members of the community have time to speak. But when it comes to economic development, environmental justice communities should not be forced to choose between the prospect of jobs and a safe and healthy environment. This model for business and job creation is designed to exploit vulnerable areas using the promise of economic development to force them to take more and more dirty industries. And these benefits that are supposedly supposed to come from this development never seem to make it to these communities. The rich neighborhoods always have the opportunity to say no, whereas these vulnerable areas are forced to make a decision between no jobs or more pollution. And that's why we cannot have these economic exemptions in the rule. Thank you. Thank you.
Hassan Alzouavi?
Hi, my name is Hassan Alzouavi. That's I-H-S-A-N-A-L-Z-O-U-A-V-I. I am a graduate researcher at Rutgers School of Criminal Justice. I moved to Newark, New Jersey five years ago intending to study judicial decision-making and fell in love with Newark and fell in love with this community and really quickly learned about how New Jersey has been used as a dumping ground for the last few generations. So now I study environmental crime and state violence. And the fact of the matter is, across like civilizations, the wealthy have always been buffered from the decisions that are made, right? So we make a decision that allows for economic loopholes to be provided, and the only people who are going to bear the brunt of that, for now, are the black and brown residents of Newark, Camden, some areas of New Brunswick. It's not gonna be the wealthy people that are buffered from these impacts, right? But the fact of the matter is, a climate catastrophe doesn't care who we are, or what kind of money we make, or whether or not we're unionized, and I'm a union gal through and through, y'all, but there are, there is no protection, economic or otherwise, from the climate catastrophe that's coming towards us, right? Making these decisions that allow for loopholes now is only going to exasperate what happens to us in the long run. We are already experiencing this. I've lived here for five years, five years, and I'm already experiencing the impact of living here. I wouldn't trade Newark for anything. I wouldn't trade Newark for anything and the community here for anything, but the fact is, we are going to see increasing consequences for the decisions that we are making today. We are going to see more extreme weather, we are going to see more sick children, more dead elders. It's not gonna get better. A few jobs are not gonna save us. I understand, I understand, the want for stability. There are so few jobs that offer benefits, there are so few jobs that offer economic stability. I get that. But we all, we all deserve a future that has jobs that are green, that aren't going to kill our loved ones. That's, thank you.
Thank you. Since I continue to butcher everyone's names, I'm just gonna remind folks to please spell them. Apologies again. Janita Miranda? Hopefully close.
My name is Janita Miranda. I'm from Newark, New Jersey. I am a singer, songwriter, and resident my entire life, not gonna give away my age. Anyways, it's unfortunate that I'm here to speak to you instead of sing to you, but I have to speak up for my community. I was gonna speak in Spanish, but I want a lot of these men here to understand what I'm saying in English. It is, I have had the honor of traveling the world because of my musical career, and I've seen overpopulated, overpolluted places, and I've seen places that aren't overpopulated and that aren't overpolluted. Unfortunately, Newark is one of the worst ones in my experience of everywhere I've traveled, and it's very unfortunate that I have to say that and also call it home. All the people that are here today, mi gente que son latino también, my people here from Newark, New Jersey, there's a reason why we're all sitting here today. We have jobs, we have lives, we have things to do, just like you guys do, but we have to sit here and we have to express to you that you're killing our people, and it's not right. And you know, I really don't, I don't, I don't know all the details, but I feel them. Every time I come home, I feel like I can't breathe. And to everybody who's talking about jobs, I want jobs for this city too, but not like this, not in the way where it's affecting our children. How dare you come up to this microphone and say you care about your future generations, but you care more about the money that's gonna go in your pocket? You don't care about these kids. You do not care. So stop telling me that y'all care, because y'all don't. You know what I'm saying? Like, if these children have asthma at this rate, imagine 10 years from now. What are we doing? We put this law out here, we are speaking to you directly. This is the fourth time. Thank you, NJDEP, for doing this for us. Thank you for standing up for us, but continue to stand up for us. Tell them to go get another job somewhere else. Go get an Uber. Do whatever else you want, but stop doing this job. Alright, so that next time I could just sing and just chill, and I don't gotta come over here and say this again. Thank you.
Thank you. Lino Santiago?
Good evening. My name is Lino Santiago, L-I-N-O-S-A-N-T-I-A-G-O. For the record, I cannot sing. Just wanna make that very clear. I'm here representing Locore Twenty-Five, and also I'm the president for the SS County Building Trades. We're not here to argue with anybody, we just wanna stay our case that in our, in our history, we have been responsible for all the infrastructures of the state, whether it's building, whether it's infrastructure for airports, infrastructure for the ports, infrastructure for water, sewer, and electric. And our members make a very good living doing it. All we're asking is that you consider what your regulations, that when it comes time to think about this job, just don't shut the jobs down, let's come together and figure out a way so that we all work together, so our members could continue to feed their families, because our members are also part of the communities. And for anybody that said that we don't have members that live in the community, they're absolutely wrong. We have a large membership, we have thousands of members that live in the community, and they deserve the same thing, the same rights that everybody does have. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Matt Smith?
My name is Matt Smith. I'm the New Jersey Director for Food and Water Watch. I'm here testifying on behalf of our 72,000 members and supporters in the state of New Jersey. I wanna start by echoing all my colleagues in saying thank you to the DEP for holding this hearing, for the work that you're doing to put forward the strongest law possible to protect environmental justice and restore generations of harm that have been disproportionately borne on overburdened communities. I wanted to start my comment by talking a little bit more about the public interest The definition of public interest in the EJ law as it was written excludes economic considerations, and the DEP must do their job and uphold this definition as it's written in the final adopted rules, including economic considerations. Let's come together and figure out a way so that we all work together, so our members could continue to feed their families, because our members are also part of the communities. And for anybody that said that we don't have members that live in the community, they're absolutely wrong. We have a large membership. We have thousands of members that live in the community, and they deserve the same things, the same rights that everybody does have. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Matt Smith.
Good evening. My name is Matt Smith. I'm the New Jersey Director for Food and Water Watch. I'm here testifying on behalf of our 72,000 members and supporters in the state of New Jersey. I want to start by echoing all my colleagues in saying thank you to the DEP for holding this hearing, for the work that you're doing to put forward the strongest law possible to protect environmental justice and restore generations of harm that have been disproportionately borne on overburdened communities. I wanted to start my comment by talking a little bit more about the public interest exception. The definition of public interest in the EJ law as it was written excludes economic considerations, and the DEP must do their job and uphold this definition as it's written in the final adopted rules. Including economic interests would create an enormous loophole, as been mentioned before, that would essentially render this landmark EJ bill a complete failure. The intention of the law was to fundamentally change the approach to business as usual that is allowed for the constant dumping of dirty industries in overburdened communities. And by allowing economic factors to trump these considerations, you would essentially leave in place the system we have now, one that continues to sacrifice public health and re-entrench the patterns of environmental racism that have left environmental justice communities vulnerable to the cumulative impacts of pollution. In fact, this section of the rule should actually be strengthened to make it clear that only very specific narrow cases could qualify for this exemption in its entirety. Further, the definition of a community in the law and in the final rules as adopted should ensure that independent community organizations, like the Ironbound Community Corporation, which is represented strongly here today, are included as, and groups that are representative of and accountable to residents are included, not just only governmental entities, of which I see very few of here in the room today. Public participation is also critical. We have been, similar to my colleagues here, who did a tremendous amount of work to inform the public, it is no longer acceptable to use the same practices that have worked historically, namely putting public notice in print newspapers and expecting that amidst a global pandemic, amidst a revolution in the way that people get information, that that's going to be sufficient public notice. The DEP and the state of New Jersey have access to extensive media properties, social media properties, public television. They should use the full resources that they have, and it should be codified in the rules to utilize the full resources of the state of New Jersey so that public participation is optimized. Again, want to thank the DEP for their time and urge them to follow the community. Notice who is not in the room today, which is the CEOs and the largest shareholders of the corporations who would profit by the economic exemption. Let's not continue to pit workers and working class people against the environment. Let's do the right thing and adopt the strongest law possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Hajra Hussain.
Hello, I'm a lifelong Jersey City resident, and I've worked in Newark in health and healthcare for four years. I'm, thank you to the New Jersey Department of Environment, DEP, for this opportunity to speak. I just would like to talk about some of the health implications that a lot of folks have touched upon today with the rates of asthma. And to allow economic exceptions to this rule would be to gut the law of its intent and its spirit. And the economic benefits would be for certain groups at the expense of the communities where these projects are proposed. So to use some of the numbers that were talked about today, or even to use hypotheticals, even if it employed 100 residents of New Jersey, but it was harming the lungs of 1,000 residents in the area, who's benefiting from this and at whose expense? Earlier, the, one of the things that was talked about was that two-thirds of New Jersey's population is in these overburdened areas. And that's exactly the point of this law, that they're already overburdened, so it shouldn't be worsened. And so if these institutions and these pollution generating facilities are absolutely necessary to New Jersey's economic growth, New Jersey's already one of the wealthiest states in the country, and to further economic prosperity at the expense of health and well-being is greed, to say the least. And earlier at the Passaic Valley Sewerage Commission hearing back in April, someone raised an excellent point that was like, if they would allow it in Bergen County, if they would allow it at the Jersey Shore, then bring it here. If you don't want it there, why do you want it here? You know, you've all heard the joke, it's the garden state for some, the garbage state for others. So why do we allow that? Why do we perpetuate it? Just, yeah, I'm not going to take the whole three minutes because it shouldn't be needed. We shouldn't be allowing, sorry, economic exceptions to what's meant to be an environmental justice law to make up for the years of systemic horrors that have been perpetuated. So yeah, take it to Bergen County, take it to the Jersey Shore. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter Chen.
Good evening. How you doing? I'm Peter Chen. It's P-E-T-E-R-C-H-E-N.
Thank you.
I'm a resident here in Newark. I am also a senior policy analyst at New Jersey Policy Perspective. New Jersey Policy Perspective is a think tank focused on economic and racial equity. It's also done extensive work on tax credit and economic impact analysis. And that's the, the topic I'd like to discuss today. Economic benefit should absolutely not and cannot be an exception to the environmental justice law. First, it is easy to exploit and hard to measure. Over the years, there have been many different tax credit programs to benefit businesses with the promise of jobs and economic development. These are almost always a mirage and fool's gold. Over the years, they have rarely if ever met their stated goals, and when they have, they have largely been self-reported with little auditing or oversight. Even for an organization that has the longstanding analysis of economic, economic projects such as the Economic Development Authority, these problems have persisted throughout multiple administrations and across the decades. Second, these programs have a history of exaggerating and hyperbolizing their economic claims. And again, the agencies who specialize in these agreements have had a hard time evaluating literally whether the jobs stated have been created, let alone for how long and for how many years. And one thing I want to note here is that these failures have been particularly pronounced in economically disadvantaged and exploited communities, where the promise of jobs has been dangled and no economic development has resulted. And third, I think there's a failure here to consider the economic harms, which are similarly enormous. So there's a recent paper from the National Bureau of Economic Research showing that air pollution is a top-five indicator of economic inequality in the country. So when we, oh, sorry, of economic opportunity in the country. So when we think about, oh, there's going to be this set of economic benefits, what's not included in that analysis is the economic harms that are coming from the harms to communities, from lost days of school and work, from lost years of life. And there's evidence showing that air pollution alone costs two years off of life expectancy globally. And so when we think about what are the economic benefits, we also have to be looking at what are the economic costs? And I don't think those are possible to be factored in because of how far down the road so many of those costs come. And we've seen that time after time, year after year. So with my 30 remaining seconds, the, the entire purpose of the EJ law is recognizing that dirty polluting industries make communities poorer, less healthy, and less safe. Correcting the historical injustice of concentration of these industries in EJ communities means rejecting economic benefit. And to my esteemed calling from the BIA, who noted that we need to, we need businesses to take the lead, that's what's happened for the last 50, 100, 150 years, and look at where it's gotten us. This EJ law is a rejection of that view. These easily exploitable, unreliable, incomplete analyses have time and again led to exactly the harms that this law was intended to prevent. Thank you.
Thank you. Sam DiFalcio.
Hi, good evening. My name is Sam DiFalcio. DiFalcio is spelled D-I-F-A-L-C-O. And I'm an organizer with the organization Food and Water Watch. Thank you to the DEP for holding these hearings and the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here in full support and in solidarity of the Newark community and environmental justice communities across the state, and I'm speaking in support of the strongest possible regulations for this law to protect clean air and public health of overburdened communities. Specifically, I'm speaking in full support of having no economic exclusion for the environmental justice law. Polluters should not be allowed to use economic arguments to push through permits that contribute to more pollution in some of the most overburdened communities in the country. We cannot have it both ways. If we allow any exemptions for the law for economic interests, then polluters, many of whom have virtually unlimited amounts of money to spend on lawyers and lobbyists, will find a loophole to these rules. If we give an exemption to the law, then we will completely undo the spirit and intent of the law. Environmental justice leaders have fought for justice for their communities for decades. We need to follow their leadership and get this right now. This law is our state's opportunity to start to right the wrongs caused to overburdened communities from generations of environmental racism. I urge you to listen to the impacted community members speaking out on this issue and codify the strongest, strongest possible regulations for the EJ law. Thank you.
Thank you. Zady Adams.
Good evening. My name is Zady Adams. I studied global public health and social work at NYU, and I've been living in Newark for the past two years. First and foremost, I want to thank everyone taking the time to hear me out. Thank you to those of you who've come in support of this law, and of course, those of you who've developed these rules. But right now, I'm speaking to those of you who've expressed concern about how these rules will affect your jobs. To you, I want to say that I understand your concerns, and I believe that we have more similarities than differences. We've all been a witness to the natural disasters that have increased in our United States and across the world, from forest fires, rising sea levels causing severe flooding, stronger hurricanes, and longer droughts that impact our crops. All these natural disasters negatively impact jobs, the economy, and our overall quality of life. Studies have shown that investing in risk reduction saves millions of dollars in the long run in comparison to being shocked by a natural disaster and having to pay for the resulting destruction and loss of life. Preparation for such events can save both homeowners and company tax dollars. Companies showing concern for the environment often expand their clientele because people realize the importance of these issues now more than ever. And being prepared for these disasters ultimately saves lives. We can consider the medical costs associated with environmental hazards. Many disease, many diseases come from exposure to ambient particulate matter pollution, such as many cancers and heart disease, which are the most common illnesses in the United States. The environment impacts every aspect of our lives. We can't enjoy any of the rights that the Constitution has granted us if we are subjected to environmental hazards. COVID-19 is a clear example of the lengths and sacrifices that we all have to make to ensure our safety for public health concerns. My heart goes out to people concerned for jobs because I have personal experience with financial struggle. It can be scary to transition to something when we have little experience with it, like switching to renewable energy. But there are and will be more jobs created in that sector, jobs that improve our quality of life, jobs that can help ensure a better future in life for generations, jobs that increase the chances of future generations as a whole, because right now, the future looks bleak in that regard. Change is always scary, but it is one of the only things in this world that is guaranteed. History and science tells us that we have to evolve in order to survive, and the earth is warning us that if we don't, our time is limited. That is why we need these rules to ensure that people are held accountable. We cannot allow for discretion and economic exemption among these companies that disproportionately impact lower-income communities, communities of color, and communities in general. Discretion allows for loopholes, and getting away with being the cause of detrimental to health outcomes for some will eventually impact us all. Thank you.
Thank you. Arnold Cohen.
Good evening. My name is Arnold Cohen. I'm here today representing the Housing and Community Development Network of New Jersey. The network is an organization of over 300 community development corporations and other organizations throughout the state of New Jersey that support the creation of affordable homes, economic opportunities, and strong communities. I'm also a lifelong resident of Newark, and I've been fighting since the late, late 70s to be able to clean up our community of iron bound from the sins of pollution in the past and to create the creation of new polluting facilities in our neighborhood. I was on a governor's environmental justice task force back then, but despite all the efforts of the past, it really has taken the governor to sign this law before we actually have something that has teeth to be able to combat the new creation of new polluting facilities in our neighborhoods, and we need to make sure that this law gets fully enforced. Department of Health says there's over half a million cases of adult asthma and over 150,000 cases regarding children. The air we breathe is essential to maintaining life. There's a real reason why the White House has developed its environmental justice framework to address hot, high and adverse environmental, economic, climate, and other cumulative impacts on communities that are marginalized, underserved, and overburdened by pollution. Dangling the carrot of trickle-down economic prosperity will not address long-term community vitality. We need DEP to make sure that it is prospective and strongly enforces this law. We cannot allow the polluting facilities to be grandfathered in that put in applications for permits after this was signed into law. The economic vitality of our community, as we said before, is only going to be strong without pollution, and we, we need you to stand strong and make sure we have a good place for us to live, bring up our children, and prosper. Thank you.
Thank you. So it is, we originally had this scheduled for six to eight. I just want to make clear, we're not going anywhere until everybody's had an opportunity to speak or they shut the lights off. So we're here until you all are done. Or nine o'clock, when they shut the lights off. I apologize. I've just been told that. I would stay as long as I need to. Talani Taylor.
Good evening. My name is Talani Taylor. I'm an NJIT graduate with my bachelor's in environmental science. Being here today goes beyond defending the New Jersey environmental justice law. I am also here to defend the lives that have been lost, as well as those that are suffering from environmental pollution and degradation within their communities, not just here in Newark, but all over the United States. Dirty industries need to be held accountable for the damage they are afflicting on both EJ communities and the environment, because they are, what they are doing is extremely counterproductive for both the economy and public health. It costs more to mitigate environmental disasters that have been afflicted on a community by dirty industries than it does to prevent them in the first place. It is crucial, now more than ever in the wake of a pandemic and climate change, to prioritize people over profits. In the same breath, it is also possible for industries and communities to coexist without jeopardizing people's health and the environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Brett Robertson.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Brett Robertson. I organize with the North New Jersey Democratic Socialists of America. Thank you for the opportunity to present my testimony today against allowing economic consideration exemptions to the environmental justice rules. I am a father of three children. I worry for the future of my children, and indeed, the future of all of our children in our rapidly warming world. That's why I was so pleased to hear about the introduction of a law in New Jersey that would protect these, that would protect overburdened communities and indeed, all of us. I'm sure there are many good-intentioned folks who support a loophole for economic considerations, because the same communities that are afflicted by environmental racism are also plagued by economic disinvestment. This is true. That's because these problems both stem from the same source. The same rapacious capitalist drive that compels corporations to maximize their profits, that drives down the wages and benefits of workers until they are barely able to survive, also demands that no limits be imposed on their profit-making activities. Putting limits on corporations' ability to freely pollute reduces profits. So does preventing them from poisoning the air or producing emissions that lead to climate change. Make no mistake, if this loophole is approved, it will keep the door wide open for the most unscrupulous actors to continue to dump filth and garbage into the communities with the least political power to stop it. That won't help anyone who lives in these communities, because it means the ongoing degradation of quality of life in those communities, air that is harder to breathe, more sickness and debilitating health conditions, early deaths. and debilitating health conditions, early deaths. What kind of economic value can we place on having communities where parents don't have to tell their children that they can't play outside today because the air quality is so bad? What economic value is there in not putting garbage incinerators and sludge processing plants near schools and apartment buildings? What economic value is there to prioritizing human life and health over profit? To me, a single human life has greater value than all the corporate profit in the world. I hope that New Jersey does the right thing and helps to ensure a future where we can all thrive instead of putting corporate profit-making ahead of human well-being. Please reject this harmful economic loophole. Thank you.
Thank you. Kim Gaddi?
Well, good evening, family. Power to the people! Yes, this is what self-determination looks like. I'm Kim Gaddi, K-I-M-G-A-D-D-Y. I am the New Jersey Environmental Justice Director for Clean Water Action, where we have 150,000 members throughout the state of New Jersey, and I am the founder of the South Ward Environmental Alliance. And like the Ironbound, the South Ward community is the backyard of the second-largest port. And we too have the largest metals recycling facility in the world, located where? In the South Ward, in the Ironbound, and at the port. And that is not by, you know, just some circumstance. That's environmental racism, and that is the cumulative impacts of pollution that we have suffered from for years and years just because of the zip code we live in and the color of our skin. And we fought for over 12 years to get this EJ Humidive Impacts Law passed because we wanted to see change, real change. We are sick and tired of being sick and tired and seeing our family members die. I'm a parent of three asthmatic children. My son died at 32 from a heart attack, and I truly believe it was connected to the pollution also, that he lived in all of his life in this city. So it is time that we stop looking at what the economics say, right? The compelling public interest and what the business industry is trying to say. Ray Cantor, I must disagree with you again because it is not about just jobs. It is about health of the members of this community and all frontline EJ communities in the state of New Jersey and in this nation. We don't want to just push pollution. We want you to reduce the pollution and remove it from our communities. It is not rocket scientists. Our governor had the political will. Our Assembly members, you heard Assemblywoman Timberlake, Senator Joyce Singleton, right? We had leaders that understood that it was the political will of the people to bring about the change so that we could stop living in diesel death zones. So we could stop living where warehouses are being built in our communities, where hundreds and thousands of trucks are traveling through our neighborhood each and every day. And then let me get to some points because I'm going to go to another level. But when we talk about public participation, I have to agree with my colleagues, disappointed in how this rule does not add more public participation throughout the whole rule. We have youngsters, and I'm hoping my staff members, Hanif and Asada Rashidi, are on that list so they can speak. We have youth that have a different way that needs to be communicated with. They are the next generation of environmental justice advocates, and we need to better include them in this process. Environmental justice means we got to speak for ourselves, right? We can't let anybody come in here and dictate to us what we want to do. Power to the people!
Casandia Bellesu?
Hi. Good evening. My name is Casandia Bellevue, spelled C-A-S-A-N-D-I-A-B-E-L-L-E-V-U-E. I want to first thank DEP for holding this public comment period, and I want to thank these community leaders and these community members for pushing this rule all the way over the edge. I am with Earth Justice here today and in support of the community groups that we partner with. As many community members and other, and even the agency has acknowledged and have stated, low-income and communities of color in New Jersey have long been sacrificed in the name of economic growth. They have long borne the brunt of pollution while reaping very little of the economic benefit. Communities with low English proficiency, low-income and minority communities should not constantly have to bargain their health for economic opportunities, as so many other people have previously said. As such, there should be no economic carve-out considered or included in the compelling public interest definition. This would entirely defeat the purpose and the clearly stated legislative intent of this rule to address the historic and ongoing inequality in facility siting and in pollution in this state. It is time for New Jersey to protect these communities the same way it protects its other constituents. In that regard, once DEP does deem that a facility has complied with the requirements of the EJ rule and is considering granting a permit for renewal or expansion of an existing facility, it is imperative that DEP consider the following principles when identifying permit conditions. First, emission mitigation efforts must be prioritized at the source, as in where the pollution is happening, so that the OBCs within these communities could actually be reaping the benefit of that condition, of that mitigation effort, excuse me. The type of mitigation must be related to the pollution being offset. There must be a direct correlation so as to avoid or minimize contributions to adverse environmental and public health stressors within the very same OBCs where this is happening. Second, all permit conditions must provide additional protections other than those already required by law, meaning these conditions must go above and beyond what is already required by law. And lastly, all conditions required by the environmental justice law must be incorporated into the facility's permit and be subject to monitoring, record-keeping, and recording requirements to ensure compliance and enforceability because vague permits and inaccurate permits does not provide the public with the opportunity to meaningfully engage in the permitting process. We intend to submit written comments on these and other points in support of DEP's rule and provide recommendations where the rule can be further improved. We thank DEP for taking this long overdue step in caring for the health of overburdened communities in New Jersey, and we further urge DEP to withstand any incentive or any calls to weaken the rule in any way. Thank you.
Thank you. Sophie Hernandez?
Hi. So I'll keep this brief so that people from this community can speak, but I just wanted to say, economic exemptions are putting the economy above health. Bad health has a negative economic outcome too, but I don't think you can put a dollar amount on human life. You can't put a dollar amount on cancer and asthma. Also, I don't think too many people mentioned it, but pollution offsets are another loophole and a bad idea. We can't allow these facilities to keep polluting. Offsets are hard to quantify, and I fear that the offsets will be over-reported. Ideally, we should prevent the pollution in the first place rather than putting it into the air and then trying to take it back out. Okay, that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Nikki Sheets?
Well, you saw me about 10 days ago, and I wasn't going to repeat what I said then, but now I am because this has been a great meeting, and people have me riled up. So let me just say, my name is Nikki Sheets. I'm representing New Jersey Environmental Justice Alliance and the Watson Institute for Urban Policy and Research, and we just want everybody in the room to know that we stand for the law and we stand against the economic, against including economic considerations in the compelling public interest exception. As people said, it would eat up the law. And everybody said, let me say it in a different way. No other communities in this state are presented with the choice of jobs they need or accepting pollution that would kill and harm them. Why is it that only black and brown and poor white communities have to make this choice? It is tantamount to extortion, and not just extortion from industry, but extortion by society. And let me say, you all will stand up against this, and I'll say this now and say it again in the end. We've got your back on this. Let's put the economic, let's put this thing about economic considerations to rest. You've heard what the people in the room have said. I only wish the governor was here to have heard what everybody said. So I'm trusting you all to take it back to the governor's office, take it to the governor and say, look, considering economic, talking about economic considerations and the exception is dead. Now, let's move on. The exception still has to be narrowed. Even taking economic considerations out is still too vague and not specific enough. I was going to give you specific examples, but I had to say this. I had to get this off my chest. So let me just say that we had suggested, the EJ community had suggested, that you do list specific exceptions. And I think, and we had said, public water infrastructure, right, which would provide, which actually would provide jobs, right? And we had said municipal-level composting, and you might want to go back and again, start to list the things that are exceptions, and then if it's not listed, it's not an exception. If you all were going to stay in, in DEP, and I was going to say in power, you have some power, we wouldn't be as worried about the exception. But eventually, you are going to go on to other jobs, and the next administration may be different. So you have to look at the exception, and you have to think 10 years from now, is it still going to stand up to, I have no doubt, to the attacks by industry? We have to make the exception conservative-proof, industry-proof, Republican-proof, and I'm not going to let the Democrats off either. We have to protect it from the next administration of Democrats who are not as visionary as the folks we see sitting in front of us. And we do want you to remember, when people start pushing up against you, the people in this room, the black and brown people across the state, and the New Jersey EJ community, we have your back.
Thank you, Dr. Sheets. Maria Lopez?
Wow, I almost thought you left me out. Thank you, and really, thank you to the community that's in this room today. We have to show up to DEP and defend ourselves because we see that there are economic interests that would have us go back in history. I bought the pen, right? The pen that promised our community protection, and y'all wrote a great law, and it could be stronger. It's almost embarrassing to have to go around the country and say that this is the strongest law in the country because this is bare minimum protection. You shouldn't have three power plants in a four-square-mile community that's surrounded by a superfund site. This is a bullshit promise, quite frankly. We deserve more. And any one of you and the many DEP employees, if you're facing political pressure, like Nikki said, you have to look at the multitude of people that you're protecting. That is your job. You're the Department of Environmental Protection. You cannot weigh economic interests. That's not even your business. You don't have jurisdiction. If you put that in, you're overstepping on somebody else's damn business, right? They need to get a permit from you. Your only consideration is the health and wellness of people and the environment. So that better stay as strong as we're seeing it in the law today because too many people in this community have been threatened by industry, sometimes by trades, and I worry for trades. I hope that if any traders are still here, which I see they're mostly not, that if they do come around, that they come around on the side of building good things because we do want jobs, right? We want jobs. We want a lot of money, but it's not going to come from DEP. Protection is going to come from DEP. What was promised by this pen that the governor signed the law, it must be enacted. These rules have to stay strong. So I just know that I want y'all to stay strong, really, my comments to y'all, because you see the multitude of people that have shown up to defend themselves, and y'all are in public service to defend all of us. So I'm really thankful for the community, and I'm thankful for this moment of us showing power, and I want to remind us that this is where it starts, not where it ends. This law is the bare minimum. That's all we want today, the bare minimum. And once enacted in December, hopefully, it'll protect us, but there'll be more, you know, there'll be legal challenges. We'll need you to come back and defend us, and we're going to have to pass more bills to really start enacting justice in this country. So thank y'all for the opportunity, and thank y'all for showing up and defending yourselves.
S. Yekay? Looks like Y-E-K-E-H, last name, and a first initial S.
This scribbling pretty fast. It's Stu Kennedy, S-T-U-K-E-N-N-E-D-Y. Thanks for the opportunity. Thanks for going the extra time here. You're public servants. You have your day jobs. You're staying late. I also have a day job. Thank you for listening. Maybe first get a little wonky. In section 713, 71C, 53D, where it says, it should say that the regulation should, the department may consider public input, that should be shall consider public input, right? Obviously, you know, when the community is aware, they show up and speak about their interests. You have to have that degree of transparency. It's extremely important. The point was brought up earlier this evening about finding new ways to bring people into the room, to make sure the opportunity to speak is there. Obviously, I'm hoping this is transformational, right? People keep showing up, right? So the team that came up with this legislation, which I think is really good, right? It's nuanced, it's measured, it's high-quality, right? Should be able to figure out a way to make it easier. You don't need a team of dedicated volunteers to get people in the room. A lot of folks have spoken about excluding economic benefits. I think that's crucial, right? This is well-thought-out legislation. A little bit of exception there. A team of lawyers can drive that a long way, right? It'd be crazy to undercut this good work, right? Yeah, that's all I've got. Thanks again for the time and the opportunity.
Thank you. Tamisha Woods? Asada Rashidi?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Asada Rashidi. I am a Newark resident, and I am the environmental justice organizer for South Ward Environmental Alliance. The South Ward Environmental Alliance's mission is to cultivate healthy and vibrant neighborhoods by ensuring that the residents are active participants in the decision-makings that go on in our community. Environmental justice activists supported the environmental justice law so that residents will not have to choose between unhealthy environment and jobs. The compelling public interest part of the law states that new permits for covered facilities in overburdened communities that contribute to the existing or new disproportionate pollution shall be denied. This is an exception for a compelling public interest in the host community when the facility primarily serves an environmental safety or public health purpose. This exception excludes economic considerations. This means that the industry cannot use economic arguments to push through permits that contribute to pollution in overburdened communities. This part of the rule is very important because industries could use the economic arguments to justify any permit application and essentially create a loophole to the rule. In addition, dirty industries are not the kind of jobs that we want to encourage in environmental justice communities. We deserve good, healthy, clean, and dignified jobs, not at the expense of more pollution. We want the kind of jobs that don't need an exemption. We want the kind of jobs that don't need an exemption to be allowed into our community. If you are legitimately clean business or can mitigate your impact, you don't need to extort the community with the promise of economic development that can never be fully accounted for after the permitting process. Lastly, the South Warren community is surrounded by warehouses and polluting industries who are bad neighbors to our community. Unfortunately, warehouses, logistics centers, public works projects, hotels, and hospitals, none of these businesses trigger this rule. Thus, the industries that will be most impacted are actually large, dirty, polluting entities that profit from the divisive language of jobs versus the environment. The New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection cannot remove the economic factors exclusion, because if you do, this will make the environmental justice bill a complete failure. Thank you.
That's right.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kate Roche. That's K-A-T-E-R-O-C-H-E. And I am a member of the North New Jersey Democratic Socialists of America, and I also live in South Orange. I'm a mother and a grandmother. And I am, first of all, I'm probably going to say things that other people have said better than I have, and I'm really in awe of all the wonderful, especially women of color, who has made this bill work tirelessly to get this bill to this point. I also wish there had been more notice, because I know a lot of people in South Orange and Maplewood are environmental activists who would have loved to have come and also speak to this bill, and to reject the idea of an economic loophole. That exception is, as many people have said, is not the purview of the Department of Energy Protection. And it is a loophole. This is a very impressive bill, and one of the things is, we're number one. New Jersey is number one in a state of superfund sites. There's 113 superfund sites here, and it would be great if we would be number one in having a really strong environmental justice law that could withstand the coming turbulent times. And the other thing is, is that a lot of jobs that, this whole, this has always been the divide, jobs versus the environment. And jobs are lessening in the polluting fields. So it's really time for corporations and other businesses to start thinking about green jobs and how to support them. And I have to say, I was really pissed off about the laughter of the people that, you know, workers that were saying they wanted jobs. They were like laughing at people talking about life and death issues. I just think that this is just really, just, yeah, it's just like inhumane when you think about people. I have a husband who died of brain cancer working for New Jersey Transit, and I know it was from a lot of the cargo, that he was moving around, and it was toxic, and they weren't telling people. I was told I should make a lawsuit. I just, I had to move on, but that was, do I have anything else to add? Well, I just think that there's, if people who say they want jobs, would they choose to live in a community that was polluted? I don't think so. And if they do live here, do they not care about the health of their children? You know, I was here when they had to build lead pipes, to replace lead pipes in Newark, and I helped work with that. It causes irreparable damage to generations, and being poisoned and toxicity, and the world is on fire. We have got to do something. This is not, we need to not make economics the priority anymore. That's it.
Thank you.
Hi, hi, everyone. My name is Yanet Ramirez, Y-A-N-E-T-T-R-A-M-I-R-Z. I live in the Ironbound, Newark. I moved here five years ago. I love Newark, and it has been my home, and New Jersey has a chance to be a leader in environmental justice initiatives. I want to thank you for everyone who's worked for this law. But it must be rigid and truly protect communities it's talking about. The existential threat that the climate crisis has brought affects all of us, but especially folks who are in our overburdened communities. I would argue, it's not just overburdened. That term is not strong enough. It is abuse, taken advantage of, and left aside. The health of a town and a city is partly how businesses behave here. How they treat their workers, the land they use, and as we know now, the land and people they abuse. A business has no right to come into any town with an empty promise of jobs and economic value that can never make up for the environmental harm a polluting industry brings. It doesn't make sense. Years and decades from now, we will ask ourselves why we weren't more strict about this. We already had companies like Diamond Alkali with Agent Orange in the 50s and 60s, and Covanta with industrial waste. No such company has made a city like Newark wealthier or healthier in the long term, very much the opposite. What does it even mean, and this is to some of the union members that are still here or have left, I don't know. What does it even mean to provide jobs for a community if it only provides 20 or 100 jobs, if the environmental pollution will be felt when these same workers' grandchildren are alive years from now? What kind of world do we want to leave behind? We need to think 100 years from now, with the knowledge we know now, what does it even mean to have good health insurance? What does that matter if we are slowly being poisoned and hurt? Having health insurance for a few will not ease an entire community's damage to our health. Let's not deny the suffering and material harm imposed on us. Including the economic exception would be to agree to a long-term destruction for everyone. And at last, capitalism does not have the imagination nor the structure to defend people. We must put profit over people. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Ndoye, and that is spelled N-D-O-Y-E. I live in Hoboken, and I am a member of Don't Gas the Meadowland and hobokenmoveon.org. I'm here tonight to speak specifically about the compelling public interest exception regulation in this new environmental justice legislation. I'm concerned with the rather ambiguous language employed in the draft regulation at this time. The term compelling public interest must be narrowly defined to specifically exclude proposals that put forth financial gain or economic development as their purpose. The idea that job creation in black, brown, or economically disadvantaged communities, excuse me, let me start again. The term compelling public interest must be narrowly defined to specifically exclude proposals that put forth financial gain or economic development as their purpose. The idea that job creation in black, brown, or economically disadvantaged communities is more advantageous than protecting community members' health and environment is completely false, racist, and unacceptable. Folks do not need to accept more pollution and risk their health and lives in order to earn a living wage. It is unconscionable, and quite frankly, magical thinking, to believe that people living in neighborhoods where they are already struggling to breathe, where their water is unfit to drink, and where they have little to no access to cool shade or healthy food, will find that taking a job in a new, toxic, dirty facility for minimal wages and limited opportunity will make their quality of life better. Governor Murphy, and you, the DEP, must make this historic bill the best it can be. The bill that truly lives up to its promise of protecting our friends, neighbors, colleagues, frontline workers, and all EJ community residents from more horrible adverse effects of further pollution and climate crisis. I strongly urge, I call on all present today, and most especially our governor, the one we elected for his green platform, to make these EJ rules ironclad and pro-environmental justice, not riddled with vague legalese that will result in death for the vulnerable populations of our EJ communities. This is a matter of life and death. Do the right moral and courageous thing. Make the compelling interest exception regulation clear, concise, narrow, and just. Thank you.
Thank you. Natalie Augusto Filion.
Good evening, and thank you for having me. My name is Natalie Augusto Filion. Natalie is N-A-T-H-A-L-Y. Augusto is A-G-O-S-T-O. Filion, F-I-L-I-O-N. I'm a resident of Newark's Upper Roseville neighborhood. I serve as chief sustainability officer for the City of Newark. I'm also on the Board of Directors for the Newark Workforce Development Board, and I serve as the city's appointed representative to the Essex County Utilities Authority Solid Waste Advisory Council. I want to start by expressing gratitude for the depth and the quality of work that went into this law. It's groundbreaking, and it's very clear that New Jersey is leading the nation when it comes to this work. I'm exceptionally proud to wear the T-shirt in support of environmental justice leaders The work that the folks in this room do make my work in City Hall possible. And I want to express the deepest thanks to this community of grassroots advocates who have made this progressive moment possible in the state of New Jersey. As we go through this important exercise of defining the specifics of this regulation, I implore you to never lose sight of the spirit of this law. In their 1987 landmark report, the United Church of Christ Commission for Racial Justice confirmed that race was the primary factor in determining the sighting of toxic wastes. This report helped to catalyze the national environmental justice movement. And despite great improvements in public health in the last 35 years, 1987, I was five years old, I'm almost 40, three of the best predictors of health outcomes remain: your zip code, your race, and your socioeconomic status. And I share this context to express my strong support for NGDP to continue to frame the idea of compelling public interest in the way that you already have written, which is to keep the benefits in the host community and to center the protection of the environment and the public health. As a student of American history and an expert in urban sustainability and public sector climate action, I want to emphasize what you've heard clearly today. We cannot allow economic interests to drive the conversation about compelling public interest. We've been there before. We're not trying to repeat history. The Cuyahoga River burned in 1969, and a year later created the Environmental Protection Agency and the Clean Air Act and the Clean Water Act. Those of us fighting for environmental justice are concerned with the distribution of environmental benefits and burdens, as well as the fairness in decision-making practices and processes. So I commend you on your efforts to make these hearings as accessible as possible by having them in person across the state, as well as virtual, and providing language access. And when it comes to the fairness of decision-making processes, I want to support and repeat what's been said today as well about increasing the radius for that mandatory notification of action. I mentioned earlier that I serve as a director on the Newark Workforce Development Board, because Newark has developed a workforce program specifically making sure that we can create benefits and jobs and bring economic interest to our community through training in other industries, not polluting industries, but the ones that are going to lead the way to the just recovery and the just future, the regenerative economy that we're trying to see in the future. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Colin Hesire Lawton.
Assalamualaikum to everybody here. This is new, kind of new to me, but as I'm listening to everybody, I'm understanding that there's lots going on in this world that needs to be readjusted. All these alphabet people with these titles and everything, what are you doing about the stuff that is going on? Like, I live in the East Ward section, which I call the Forgotten City. Everything's down there, from the incinerator to the garbage metal dumps and all that. It goes on. Granted, we all need jobs, but at what cost? The cost I see is that we're not going to be here on this earth for so long, and when we do, we got to make the best of it. And if you people are not going to help and protect our daily lives, then what are you here for? Back, I grew up in Elizabeth, where there were Exxon refineries, the airport, they changed all that. Now they make the planes fly over the Arthur Kill. Exxon refinery has reduced its pollution, which is good, but we're in Essex County in Newark. The East River is still dirty as hell. The streets are still dirty as hell. The river, when it floods, it floods in the East Ward. Like, we got to take air mattresses and rowboat just to walk down the damn streets. Now, if y'all supposed to be protecting our interests, then you need to change those sewer lines. You need to do this, you need to do that. It ain't all about the money, it's all about human dignity. Because you're not going to be on this earth that long either. So when you die, who are you going to answer to? Not me, not the people here, but the man above going to tell you, what have you done? And you can put on a farcade that I did this and I did that, but deep down inside, you ain't done nothing, and you still ain't going to do nothing. The whole thing now, we're living in an environment that now, global warming, that is all done behind these companies with their pollution, these companies what they want to make their pockets rich, the Rockefellers, the Geddys, and then JP Morgan and them, they all dead and gone, but their descendants are still doing the same thing that they were doing, that they're doing now. Now, what environment protection are you really in protecting? Your pockets or the human race? And as I can see in a few minutes, ain't shit going to get done.
Cameron F.
Hey there, I'm Cameron Foster, C-A-M-E-R-O-N-F-O-S-T-E-R. And I'm from the New Jersey Research Project. We're a community organization working in New Jersey's rural and suburban regions. As many before me, I'd like to share my support for the landmark environmental justice legislation we're here to celebrate, but question the need for economic exemptions that may open new and troubling loopholes. I'm not a Newark resident, I'm from New Brunswick, but I am a two-time flood survivor. Almost 10 years ago, during Superstorm Stanley, my home in Point Pleasant flooded with four feet of water, displacing my family and I for almost six years. And now I live in Somerset, right outside New Brunswick. And lucky me, when Hurricane Ida hit last year, my first-floor rental flooded again, and I'm currently still partially displaced, as are many Newark residents. I know how life-altering, climate-related disasters can be firsthand, and communities that have been historically overburdened by pollution and toxic industries don't just face a flood, they face a toxic flood, and already need additional resources to address generations of inequality. There are people here today who can tell you firsthand how deeply that threatens their and their family's health, their safety, and their homes. And climate disasters will only increase in frequency and destruction as New Jersey continues to invest in polluters. And we know that And we know that while disasters don't discriminate, disaster recovery systems do. To allow environmental injustice to continue in the form of exceptions for economic considerations is to allow polluting industries loopholes to keep on polluting, subjecting communities like Newark to the continued burden of dirty industries, while putting the entire state at risk for climate disasters of increased frequency and magnitude. There should be no economic exception for industries that hurts communities, especially when clean alternatives exist to bring good jobs without forcing them to choose between those jobs and a healthy environment. Industries like offshore wind have the potential to provide jobs without increasing pollution. There are more reasonable ways to generate economic interest in communities like Newark without making exceptions for polluters. If you're a legitimately clean business or can mitigate your impact, you don't need to extort the community with the promise of economic development that you can never be fully accounted for after the permitting process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Thanks for having me. Thank you for everybody that's here. I'm from Passaic County, New Jersey. I worked as an auto damage insurance adjuster for a large insurance company for about 10 years, and I had the luxury of working in Newark. I can tell you that it's hot. I can tell you that it smells different down here than a lot of the other locations that I worked at. It's noticeably different. My time with GEICO, my time with transportation is what put me onto the pollution crisis, which got me involved in research and realizing that we are in a climate crisis, whether or not we're going to declare it or not. There's also high death rates due to pollution, asthma and such. We've heard other people talk about it, and it's all connected. There should be no, I'm here to support the environmental protection law, and I'm against any exception for the economy. Now, these loopholes or these opportunities for loopholes is based on a false idea that companies want economic growth, but there's no way to put value on life. There's no way to put value on something. And the reason that I'm here is because I don't live in this neighborhood, but we all share the same air, we all share the same water. The science is clear, we're in a pollution crisis. The climate is changing, it's getting warmer, and New Jersey is actually increasing temperatures at a rate higher than anywhere else in, on the planet, actually. So scientists are concerned with emissions. There is alternative energy. There's no reason for there to be any type of exception for business. Thank you.
Thank you.
How's it going? My name is Brian Zambrano, and I'm here with the Party for Socialism and Liberation. I'm here because I grew up very close to Newark and Elizabeth. I'm here, like many others, because the people of this city-
Sir, could you just a little bit closer to my phone?
Is this better?
Yes, much better. Thank you.
Awesome. My name is Brian Zambrano, and I'm here with the Party for Socialism and Liberation. I'm here because I grew up very close to Newark and Elizabeth. I'm here, like many others, because the people of this city are our neighbors, our family, and our friends. This law is an opportunity to make a significant move forward in protecting the environment that we all inhabit. I work two jobs, one in the legal system and another in the medical field. Too often, we have laws that are written to protect the interests of big money and undermine the safety and security of the most vulnerable. This law represents the ideals of environmental justice that we all share, but allowing a loophole for those who are able to afford it with a pretext of providing economic benefit to people who have been historically disadvantaged only paints over the harm that such a loophole would enable against the most vulnerable community members. We have an opportunity to write a law that does precisely what it poses to do, which is to protect our environment and the health and well-being of the people in our communities. Using jobs and supposed economic benefit as a pretext for a loophole would only send the message that in order to receive economic benefit, these communities would need to give up their health and wellness. It would not tell people that their economic development comes at the cost of the environment and their own health. It would be a slap in the face to the communities that would be harmed by the law by treating them as expendable. Our laws should protect our people. Our people are not expendable. Our environment is not expendable, and we shouldn't have to trade one for the other. We need to protect the environment. We need to protect the health and safety of our communities. An economic exception would tie together harm to the environment with the economic development of historically marginalized communities. Environmental justice would direct the harms of damaging the environment on the corporations that profit off driving us towards climate catastrophe. Instead, an economic exception directs the damage of environmental destruction towards the people least responsible. How this law is written tells us who this law is written for. An economic exception tells us that the interests of corporations have already been considered, and the fact that we have to come here to speak up for the lives of our neighbors tells us exactly how their lives were considered when this bill was being written. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Angie. I used to live by High Court. My sister has asthma, and my mom is currently ill and trying to live a better life has always been my go-to. That's why I go to Down Bottom Farms. I go to the farm, and I find that it's way hotter than where I live now in Bloomfield. Sorry. Why do you think that is? When we are at the farm all day, we get sick to our stomach because it stinks so bad. Imagine how our summer has been. I want to continue coming to the farm and growing food for our community, but you know we had to put everything in raised beds because the land we're currently on is also poisoned. Everywhere I go, everywhere we go over here in Newark, it seems like there's always something. How do I have a better life then? I don't want to leave. I want to stay and make the city a better place. And now that this EJ law, there's a chance to do a right thing to help protect me and our people. The planes are allowed, the trucks drive where they're not supposed to. It stinks all the time, and it's supposed, and it was super hot in the farm. It was just 110 degrees at the farm where it was 80-something everywhere else. If you don't live here, may I ask, how exactly can you tell us? How much can we take? Enough is enough. Do the right thing. Stop dumping on Newark. Thank you.
Jamar Lazoe?
Kids, another kid, another kid. We got four kids. We got four kids. All right. It's okay. Push it down. All right, you got it?
Hello. Good evening. My name is Jamar, and I live in Newark. And I don't want any more toxic and chemicals around me. It stinks all the time. We can't play okay. We can't learn okay, and we get distracted by the trucks. We get disturbed by the planes. I hope you all learn from the people who are leading this fight, because I'm going to continue fighting with them. And I want clean jobs for my parents and not dirty jobs.
Just ladies and gentlemen, we have a hard stop at 10, so we're going to keep going until then. Appreciate it. Aditi Varshenya?
Hi there. My name is Aditi Varshen. I'm with the Global Alliance for Incinerator Alternatives. We are an alliance of grassroots organizations from around the world, including here in New Jersey, who are fighting on the frontlines to build a just transition away from polluting waste systems. The environmental justice analysis the state is using in these regulations is groundbreaking in this country, and we recognize and celebrate that. However, if an economic loophole would defeat the law's purpose, would, an economic loophole would defeat this law's purpose to switch away from the business's usual practices that have subjected environmental justice communities to the cumulative impacts of pollution for decades. What we're not going to do is sacrifice more black and brown lives in the name of corporate greed and questionable promises around the economy that DEP has no jurisdiction to enforce. Citing polluting facilities in environmental justice neighborhoods using the rationale of economic interest fails to account for the devastating costs that exposure to toxic pollution places on the health of frontline communities. It's really hard to put a dollar figure on the value of human life, but I will say that in 2017, researchers in Baltimore quantified the health impacts of just one of the pollutants emitted by the city's incinerator, just one of them. Fine particulate matter emitted by this facility costs the city $55 million per year in emergency hospital visits, medical treatments, and lost workdays due to health problems each year. Once you throw in additional facilities and a broader range of pollutants into the study, you get an even larger sum, and that's what's happening in Newark. Those are astronomical costs around people's health. Analyses citing supposed economic benefits of polluting facilities also fail to account for the high financial costs associated with managing the climate crisis being accelerated by those very facilities, costs which will be disproportionately borne by environmental justice communities. EJ communities are lied to over and over again with promises of economic benefits and jobs that never deliver. I wish our friends in the trade had stuck around, because the local Covanta incinerators, for example, employ just 20 people. Few, if any, are from the communities in which they're cited. They're not even union jobs, and they dump millions of pounds of chemicals into the air and fuel the climate crisis. Meanwhile, we have other options. Sending waste to landfills and incinerators creates just under two jobs per 10,000 tons of materials. For the same volume of materials, reuse creates almost 200 times as many jobs as landfills and incineration, and recycling creates about 60 times as many for that same volume. So, black and brown people in New Jersey deserve safe, well-paid jobs, and this is just one example that shows that we do not need to be building polluting facilities to create jobs. NJDEP should also expand the definition of facility under this law to include new polluting technology, like pyrolysis and gasification, sometimes referred to as chemical recycling or advanced recycling. These facilities prop up the fossil fuel industry, which is pivoting to plastics, as lawmakers and organizations decarbonize the energy sector. Chemical recycling is an unproven, high-risk investment with a high-track record of technical failure and low financial viability, and already, these facilities have caused environmental justices in communities elsewhere in the US. And I urge NJDEP to listen to the environmental justice leaders in the room today. Thank you.
How y'all doing today? My name is Hanif Campbell. I'm 18 years old. I just graduated from art high, and I've been in the environmentalist setting since 13 years old. Thank you. I've been in the environmentalist setting since 13 years old, doing volunteer work for my second mother, Kim. I have four brothers. Three have asthma. My oldest doesn't. I lost my father not too long ago, a year ago, from a heart attack, and he also had heart problems too. So now I'm the man that owes. So with that being said, the environment that my little brothers are in affects me more than it affects them. It affects me on a mental level, and I do work for the Southwater Environmental Alliance. I'm a youth organizer. I want to get youth like the kids that just came up. I want to get them in stuff like this. I need more kids like me and stuff like this. My best friend. I need all of us in stuff like this. And at first, I wasn't sure about doing this type of work, but I kind of love it now. So I really appreciate y'all for setting this law in place, but please don't let there be any cracks in it. Any cracks will lead to disaster, and we don't need disaster in the city anymore. We have enough of that. So with all of that being said, I thank you. I see that you really do care, even though you keep a business posture. Like, I could see that you really do care about this type of stuff, and I appreciate that from you. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, good evening. I began work at DEP in 1969, and am also a member of the American Chemical Society, and I studied chemical engineering and civil engineering, so I have advanced degrees in those. I understand the, what's happening here is obvious. You don't need economic exemptions. There's enough economic exemptions given within DEP's permitting process, so that clearly doesn't need to be done. The second thing is, you need a canary in the coal mine. So I don't know if this legislation or these regulations allow for the development of a benchmarking system in these communities that allow for better and more frequent analysis of air pollution, more of the air monitoring systems that are presently in place by the DEP, and whether or not you can become a, utilize the kind of system that is in place from water. In water, we have the US Geological Survey, and they have throughout the United States and throughout New Jersey water monitoring gauges, which are funded by both sides of the issue. So whether it's water supply or it's wastewater discharges, they help pay for these gauges, because that's the most fundamental thing in terms of transparency. When you get this data out and everybody can see it, and it becomes something that's available over the internet, if in fact it is, then great, but if it isn't, then the legislation and the regulations could help that, this avenue for communities. And especially in communities, from what I'm listening to, asthma and other red, and particulates from both landfills and incinerators, these are easily monitored facilities, and there should be, that information should be going out onto the web, so that it can be seen by other people readily. And that is probably one of the most important things. Plus, the notice requirements, yes, at least 1,000 feet, if not more, and ongoing, what would happen if in fact you had a park system within these communities that was able to also monitor air pollution and other types of pollution materials, whether it's growing food and the other, I would call biosensors, that need to be installed in every one of these communities? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Virginia Hammer?
Hi, everybody. I'm the artistic director of Mid-Atlantic Theater Company Newark, Virginia Hammer. Hammer town, y'all. All right. I've been in Newark 12 years, and, oh man, I'm going to have to make this stick somehow. I do thank you, everybody, that drafted this law. If you can't, if you can't make this stick, obviously, we're really screwed. I don't know if this species has more than 50, 60 years left on the planet. I really don't know. We may have over-evolved as a species, but if you can't do this, you're, oh gosh, my heart just goes out to the younger people. The 21st century is different. I've read so much about population. We are superconsumers. Every one of us is a consumer. Raise your hand if you planted a tree in the last few years. Thank you! Thank you. Okay, I got off the track a little bit, but, you know. You can't breathe money. You can't drink money. You can't eat money. And these, I do think that the DEP tries very, very hard. I don't know if y'all know how hampered they are in Washington. You cannot expect either of the two parties, I think. They're so bought up by the corporations at this point. I voted Green Party the last three elections. Anyway, we are all superconsumers. I gave up my car 14 years ago. I have, I try so hard never to buy water in a plastic water bottle. You're screwing yourself if you do that. Carry your reusable water bottle around with you. And of course, renewable energy is the only solution. Try mentoring. Mentoring. I didn't have kids. I was a teacher in the hood in Philly for years, fostering and adopting. If we can't make this stick, I can't say this enough times, you poor, you poor young people are so screwed. Yes, of course, the people of color, the less advantaged community should not have this toxifying crap killing them. But when did human beings ever do anything according to- to "should"? You can moralize your face off. The bottom line, economics drive the human species, and you cannot just expect these huge supercorporations. Oh, I only have 42, that's not good, 40 seconds left. Every single one of us has got to stop being a superconsumer. Try mentoring. This is not just and fair. There is no such thing as cosmic justice. We don't have time. The privileged people don't have time. Your kids are not gonna be, you won't have grandkids on the planet. There will be, not be life on this planet. It's very terrifying, and you will have more and more violence in the streets as the price of food goes up. You cannot raise enough food. What can I say? This is the last generation, this might be the last decade, to have any hope for yourselves. Every one of us has to change. Every one of us is accountable for where we are today, especially the super-rich. What can I say? You've got to change now! I'm sorry if I sound angry. I've cried a lot, and I care for the other species, too. You depend on them a lot more than you realize.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mid-Atlantic Theater Company Newark. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Oscar Lopez?
The website's done. It will be back up again. Techno. The Facebook pages, there's a good one and a bad one. There's a lot of good stuff on YouTube. Thank you. I do anti-violence act, group acting classes all around Newark.
Ma'am.
I tried to get a global warming play festival.
Ma'am. Ma'am, I appreciate, I appreciate, I appreciate the plugs, but we gotta move. Oscar Lopez, please.
The website's done. It will be back up again. Techno. The Facebook pages, there's a good one and a bad one. There's a lot of good stuff on YouTube. Thank you. I do anti-violence act, group acting classes all around Newark.
Ma'am.
I tried to get a global warming play festival.
Ma'am. Ma'am, I appreciate, I appreciate, I appreciate the plugs, but we gotta move. Oscar Lopez, please.
The website's done. It will be back up again. Techno. The Facebook pages, there's a good one and a bad one. There's a lot of good stuff on YouTube. Thank you. I do anti-violence act, group acting classes all around Newark.
Ma'am. Ma'am. Ma'am, thank you.
Good evening. I'm a canvasser with ICC, but today I come more as a concerned citizen, more of a disillusioned citizen, because growing up, the EPA and like the DEP, these agencies were heroes of mine because I come from New York, so seeing the pictures of New York in the 70s and the 80s, that looked, it looks like Beijing, and it's smog, and then, when I grew up, I saw the noticeable changes in the neighborhood of it being cleaned up, but then, all of the protection, Brooklyn, I can't live there anymore. I can't afford it. I was moved out, my family was moved out, and even though there were these protections and changes, they didn't protect the people there. So, I've been working as an independent contractor in New Jersey. I've got to see a lot of New Jersey. New Jersey has some of the most diverse and unique ecosystems in the United States. We have marshes, we have mountain ranges, we have beaches, we have estuaries, we have streams, but when I was going to school in Mammoth and on the shore, we would have to close down because the Newark sewage system was so built up that there was E. coli in the water every summer. And if you think that doesn't affect the economy, when these beach towns rely on tourists, but tourists, week after week, can't go to the beach because there's E. coli in the water, everything that happens in Newark trickles out into all of the other neighborhoods. People think that this is just some scapegoat. It's not swept under the rug and goes away. This is a problem that's causing damage and economical damage to many different neighborhoods, and there's no amount of palm greasing that you can do to get a high-rise built, even though there's a public housing crisis. There's no cooperation with the money to build an intellectually unsound building. So, how come the contents of that building, you can get a permit to, whatever, it doesn't matter, the perceived threat of a building falling is enough to not issue a permit, but the proven danger of these buildings existing isn't enough. It's a hypocrisy that has no answer besides you're greasing hands, and if you really were interested in making money, then build up New Jersey because Newark, it has neighborhoods of such diversity that we could be bringing in tourists for not just Newark, but for all of the mountains and the marshlands and the streams and the estuaries that we have. Focus on making money off of the resources because this is, you know, this is the DEP, and the E does not stand for protecting the economy. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy Goldsmith?
Hi. Hi, I'm Amy Goldsmith. I'm the state director for Clean Water Action. As Kim Gaddy said, we have 150,000 members and a million members nationwide. I bring my passion to this, to this microphone of over 40 years of organizing, and what motivates me every day, each and every day, is my hate of polluters and the audacity of them to blatantly disregard workers and community health, and they have no right to take our life away, as you've heard over and over again this evening. Communities and families can't thrive when they're gasping for their breath and living with health endangerment each and every day, which is what's happening here, whether you're in Camden, or Newark, or Patterson, or Perth Amboy. The environmental justice law and the proposed regulations, as written, play a role in addressing systemic environmental racism. It doesn't solve all the problems, but it is really a key place, a key tool. We're already beyond the toxic tipping point, and so this law and this rule is key. That's why there should be no economic exception. We should uphold the statutory intent to reduce the actual pollution, not relative to somebody else, but the actual pollution in communities, not one more morsel of toxins. We need to define facilities in ways that are tighter and clearer, covering and preventing emerging polluting technologies, as was spoken of from Gaia, from coming to New Jersey, like pyrolysis and gasification. We need to make sure that the technologies are not cloaked with trick names that aren't and shouldn't be allowed in New Jersey, like chemical recycling, which is really burning plastic. Many hours were put into this law and drafting these regulations. You were part of that team. I was part of that team, and we want to make sure that this is the strongest and most effective and most enforceable regulation possible without loopholes and gives the greatest protection. No wiggling, no weakening, no loopholes, no offsets. Clean air, clean water for all should not be a privilege. It's a right. The DEP's job is to protect, not balance the economic interests of anyone. All we're here for is to protect our health, our lives, and the future generations. Stand tall, as others have said, we've got your back. Thank you.
Thank you. Yasmin Aiden? Yasmin? Paula Rogovan?
I'm from Teaneck, New Jersey. I'm a proud union member. I've been a member of the United Federation of Teachers for 44 years and a member of the Retired Teachers Chapter since 2018. Sorry, some of the union members are not here any longer to hear what several of us have said, many of us have said. In 2018, many of us spoke out against the Meadowlands Power Plant proposed for the environmental justice community of North Bergen because we were concerned about health impacts of pollution. When we spoke at the freeholders, now commissioners, meetings, executives from construction trade unions spoke in favor of the power plant because it would create jobs. It turned out those were temporary construction jobs, but there would be only about three jobs at the power plant. It would have been a dirty power plant. Plus, the DEP would have allowed the corporation to buy credit for ozone from a dirty facility that had closed, ignoring the fact that the ozone or smog would have harmed people's health. Many of you remember that. After hundreds of people marched, got 52 towns to pass resolutions opposing the power plant, signed petitions and more, in 2019, Governor Murphy rejected the Meadowlands Power Plant. We made sure the governor did not buy the argument that job creation was a compelling issue. The same thing happened with New Jersey Transit's proposed power plant in Kearney. We marched, we spoke out, we got resolutions passed and more. Finally, we made sure Governor Murphy demanded, insisted that New Jersey Transit pivot from a polluting gas power plant to a renewable energy microgrid that would protect people's health. New Jersey Transit has since decided to ignore the governor and has gone back to the gas power plant proposal. The environmental justice law cannot allow this kind of backtracking. The people in environmental justice communities should not have to fight so hard to breathe clean air. Over 139 healthcare professionals and scientists sent a letter opposing PVSE's proposed power plant in the Ironbound. They sent the letter to Governor Murphy and the DEP explaining that pollution from a PVSE power plant would combine with pollution from heavy industry, airplane and truck traffic, incinerators and other power plants. They cause cancers, asthma, and other heart and lung diseases, stillbirths and miscarriages. It shouldn't be so hard for the environmental justice community to fight to breathe clean air. These are my recommendations for the rules for the EJ law. One, environmental justice law must close the loophole so that the environmental justice rules will guarantee that environmental justice communities are protected by law from the ravages of pollution, from anyone who ignores their concerns about health, the health of residents, from politicians who might not care about protecting people of color or low-income residents, from companies that would put profit over people, from corruption and from racism. Residents should not have to rally and march for their right to clean air with each permit application. Number two, pollution offsets must not be used to justify approval of a pollution permit application that is subject to the environmental justice law. Any pollution emissions reductions recognized by the law must come directly from the facility applying for the permit. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Chris Nowell?
My name is Chris Nowell, N-O-W-E-L-L. I've, oh, I live in Fort Lee, and I've been a high school environmental science teacher in Dover, New Jersey for 10 years, and I'm a proud union member. I stand in solidarity with my fellow New Jerseians in overburdened communities around the state. Recently, you know, I've just been learning myself about environmental justice and environmental racism. Only in the past couple of years have I really heard about it and started learning about it, and I read A Terrible Thing to Waste by Harriet Washington that really opened the floodgates for me. And I realized that the concepts of environmental justice and environmental racism are not, they're not in the New Jersey science standards, and so I was thinking of ways of introducing these concepts to my students in, you know, in my lessons. And so, you know, this past year, we were looking at maps of the Ironbound in Newark and discovering correlations between pollution and people of color, the areas where there tend to be higher percentages of people of color, and discussing historical causations for these overburdened communities. And, you know, some of my students were really shocked by this, and they'd never heard of environmental justice or environmental racism before. And, you know, to discover that it's not an accident and not a coincidence was really surprising for many of them, yet there are still some who ultimately were not surprised. You know, my students are 80% plus Hispanic, and it's a low-income community, so, you know, perhaps they're kind of familiar with this sort of situation, I can say. And, you know, a question that kind of stuck with me, that rose in my mind, was, well, how can there be overburdened communities in New Jersey when we have a DEP that's pretty strong? I mean, I've heard, much stronger than many other states. I have a friend who works for the DEP. He's an IT guy now, works managing databases and things like that, so we talk all the time about DEP. But, you know, one of my thoughts was that maybe your hands are often tied, you know, due to the language of existing rules and laws, but in this case, this is a chance for you to do what you do, right? To do what you probably signed up to do when you joined the DEP. And, you know, I'll add, there are, well, were, many contractors here who I'm sure take pride in what they do and want jobs, and that's totally understandable. But if anyone is owed anything, if anyone needs the state to look out for them, it's the people who have been living and suffering in their overburdened communities for decades. So, do not allow any economic loopholes written into the laws. Strive not only to have the strongest law, environmental justice law in the country, but the best possible environmental justice law. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Nancy Griffith? Nancy? Oh, sorry, there you go. Thank you. Nancy, you were here earlier. I appreciate you waiting.
Yeah, well, my ride's still here, I hope. So, my name is Nancy Griffith, N-A-N-C-Y, last name G-R-I-F-F-E-T-H, and I'm commenting on behalf of Unitarian Universalist Faith Action, New Jersey. UU Faith Action is a faith-based nonprofit that believes in the worth and dignity of every human being and justice, equity, and compassion in human relations. I'd like to start by thanking the DEP for your hard work. As a member of EJAC, I've seen how hard you've worked on this law and how hard you've worked to explain it, and it's really great. I'd also like to thank the great EJ advocates who first explained this problem to people who often didn't even want to listen and who finally got a bill written and got the law passed. So, UU Faith Action is in support of the rules as they are. No economic benefits offsetting pollution, and also, we support a very strict interpretation of the compelling interest clause. The most important thing is that the EJ law must protect the health of EJ communities. And I've suffered some, a few health problems in recent years as I've aged, and it's clear that we just don't have anything if we don't have our health. And it's just awful to think about children who start their lives. I mean, I'm old, so big deal, but children, thinking about children starting their lives with health challenges is just appalling. Now, I believe that dirty industries do so much damage to our health and our communities that they actually hurt our economy and threaten our future prosperity. And I don't know, I've been sitting here puzzling, this wasn't prepared, so I'll just bear with me, but I've been puzzling, is there really a trade-off between, between health and economic health? I mean, pollution is going to drive shoppers away from an area, it's gonna, workers aren't gonna want to work there, so why would businesses go there? Residents will be driven away. So, how can a community be economically healthy if it's polluted? So, the whole business of economic benefits trading off against pollution is just a fallacy. So, so, and in addition, polluting industries, this is a fact, not speculation, polluting industries victimize the same communities over and over and over again, and this is just completely unfair and wrong, and the EJ law has to stop this. So, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your patience. Chris Reynolds?
All power to the people. My name is Chris, I'm with the Party for Socialism and Liberation. The United States touts itself as being the most democratic place on earth, yet here we are again, fighting for our basic human rights. In 2022, fighting for the right to breathe clean air, to drink clean water. What is democratic about getting cancer? What is democratic about dying of asthma or suffering brain problems from drinking lead in the water? If the laws do not protect the air that we breathe, then who do they protect? There is a reason that there are loopholes for corporations to make money in these laws. We need every environmental protection law we can get, but why are these laws not enshrined in the Constitution of the United States? It should be illegal to pollute the earth. We must constantly beg and plead, grovelling, to have our human rights protected, to have the environment protected. I have asthma, and so, and as do so many black and brown children in New Jersey and everywhere else in America. As Kwame Ture said, "If black people want anything, we must shed our blood." To free ourselves from slavery, we had to shed our blood. For voting rights, we had to shed our blood. Why haven't we switched to renewable energy yet? Studies have shown that it is possible to switch and have our energy needs met. Everyone is so concerned about making money, 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 money. I hope everyone here sees what is really important to the government. Saving lives should be profitable. Creating green infrastructure should be profitable. Joe Biden has spouted rhetoric about the importance of protecting the environment, but has opened up more land for oil drilling. The fossil fuel industry has lied for decades as they paid scientists to write fake papers downplaying the effects of climate change. Should we let them get away with this? One of the US most bitter enemies, Cuba, has a comprehensive 100-year plan to address climate change that they've instituted in tandem with the scientists of the country. 100-year plan, and you can't get that under capitalism. The only thing they care about is the next financial quarter and the one after that. This is obviously a systemic problem, profit over people. Much more is needed than a few environmental justice bills. As the speaker said before, this is the bare minimum, but we need a mass movement of everyone here. We need socialism. The United States government has no conscience. The only thing they care about is profit, profit over people. And I'm here to tell you that the people move everything. And if the people move united, we can demand anything and we can change this wretched system. Thank you.
Thank you. Daniella Rivera Solano?[795.88][795.88]76.08][S06] Hello?
Does it work?[798.88][798.88]77.08][S07] Oh, did we turn it off? Hello?
Think you're good.
You can hear me?[807.12][807.12]78.08][S08] Mic check. I could turn it on now.[812.88][812.88]79.08][S08] Anyone working the mic?[816.88][816.88]79.88][S06] I can... Oh, okay. Hello? Oh, okay. Hi, my name is Daniella Rivera Solano. I am a proud resident of Newark, New Jersey, born and raised in Ironbound, and I did not originally plan to come here tonight. I learned of it at 6:00 PM, actually. I came immediately because I really care about my city, my state, this nation, and I want what's best for it. So I'm very happy that New Jersey's taking a step forward and trying to implement this law. And if we're going to set the precedent for the na, we should do so for the nation and we should do it right. That means not make, work, if the businesses aren't working with New Jersey, if they're not working with the government, why do we keep making exceptions for them, loopholes for them, by making, giving them tax breaks, giving them these benefits? The people who keep working with the government are the people themselves. We keep dealing with it, we keep saying, okay, fine. You know what? At the end of the, okay, sorry, this isn't really planned, but you, when you look at the way that the environment here in New Jersey is, we have to deal with that every day. The other day, it rained on Tuesday, I believe, one of these days. And I was very happy because usually the rain washes all that dirtiness, all that smelliness here in Ironbound, but when I walked out, it smelled even worse than it did before. And it's really sad to see that. I go to school in, at the University of Chicago. I am a political science and human rights major, just finished my first year, so I still have a long way to go. But I do want to return back to New Jersey and it's really sad when I come back home and rather than enjoying the place where I grew up in, I, I'm constantly reminded that it's getting worse. The smell gets worse. When I was younger, it was a little better, but every time I come back, it smells like feces. The, the air stinks, the ground is dirty, and it's really disheartening. And so, we the people keep working around it. The businesses aren't working around it. They're trying to find loopholes, and when you give them loopholes, they're going to keep playing tricks back on you. They're not, they're not trying to improve, be greener. And when, and if they are, they shouldn't get a round of applause for it because that's the bare minimum. That's what they should be doing. They should be caring about the people. They should be, because guess what? They are the people too. What happens in Newark, that air doesn't just affect Newark residents. Sure, it hits us the hardest, but it also affects them, the people in other communities, the high-income communities of New Jersey. So let's consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. We've got about a half hour left, I got 12 or so people, so we're going to try to move through this.
Thank you for having the hearing. Most gracious thanks to this audience that was here tonight before you, the young people of Newark, New Jersey and surrounding communities. And that is our future. That is what we need to listen to. And I know I've been a citizen activist for 40 years. We've been before these hearings over and over again, always up comes, "Well, we're going to give you some jobs." And as speaker after speaker stated, that is never monitored and that has never been effective. So to add something to a bill that you've been, that so many people have worked so hard on, to do such a great job, a groundbreaking job, that actually should have been in place 40 years ago, not just, just 10 years ago. We needed this law years and years ago. And it is brilliant, and it needs to be as effective as possible. And to put this loophole in would be a disaster, will ruin the whole law. So please do the right thing. I would like to say, the people in Ironbound and in Newark who are living with the frontline effects of these polluting industries and of the superfund sites, right, really represent the entire state. Because those industries are CO2 and methane polluters. They are the leading polluters adding to climate change. And if you live, I happen to live, I've been in Newark many, many years and other, and in Ironbound many years. I now live in Union. It doesn't rain without people out there now worrying about whether their homes are going to flood. This state lost 27 people in Ida and had mounds of garbage from homes that had flooded and still has displaced people living in hotels down in Elizabeth. So this is not a small community that's affected by these words, you know, economic exceptions. No, this is the entire state. This is the entire nation. We're facing a crisis. That's why this room was filled with young people. They know the kind of crisis we're facing. And the woman who has the theater company, who went in a, yeah, Mid-Atlantic Theater Company, who went into a rage, that is probably, let me just finish, that is probably the most effective response today. You know, we're all being rational and I so appreciate the number of young people who did their homework and brought you beautiful information, and I hope we honor them. I hope we honor them and I hope we all, as adults, go out there every day and do something to reduce pollution and reduce CO2 and methane emissions, which means probably not driving, not buying, and changing our lifestyles. So anyway, start with this, no economic exception, and thank you very, very much.
Thank you ma'am. Juliet Meneses, Meneses, Juliet? Is that Juliet?
Lillian Rivera?
What's that?
Lillian Rivera?
No, I have, I, Lillian Rivera, that sounds great.
Oh, that's neat.
Would you like to come up?
Yes.
You waited a long time. Please, come get it.
All right, thank you. Hi, my name is Lillian Ribero, Ribedo, as you would say in Portuguese. I am a lifelong Ironbound resident. I was born and raised in the Ironbound. And I'm going to talk a little bit about a different angle first. I've been listening to this audiobook called Radium Girls. Has anyone read that book?
No.
Yes? Okay, so Radium Girls, I highly recommend it, written by Kate Moore. And these, it's based on women who wanted to work in the early 1900s, and they were offered jobs to work with radium, making a lot of money, and told that it was actually healthy for them. And they would put radium, paint these clocks that glow in the dark, and paint the radium on the clocks and put the radium in their mouth, and they were told not to worry. And basically, this factory was based in Newark, by the way. And it's really, it's, it's true. Yes. So I recommend everyone give it a listen, but I, I bring this to attention today because when we talk about jobs and we look at our history and the history of poisoning our communities and people, it's been happening for so long. And it's the DEP that really is making the changes and putting together the policies and the actions that we need to take to move forward progressively and make changes now. As was said, our generation really is the generation possibly that has, if any, power left to make the most change possible. And one of the reasons why I actually chose not even to have children, and there's more and more women like me that don't want to have kids because the next generation of the human race is just going to suffer the repercussions of poisoning our planet and world. And although, although, you know, I'm still, I still get excited to wake up in the morning and do things with my life, and I'm very active in the theater community myself. I've directed plays on climate change this past year. I was on the Environmental Club in high school, at Eastside High School. I volunteered with NJ Perk at Rutgers-Nork, raising awareness on our water drainage systems. I wanted to study environmental science, but it was so depressing, I actually got out of the field. And I work now in drama therapy and as a theater organizer. But in my last 16 seconds, I want to let you know that my beige house in the Ironbound has turned black, and I've had to power wash it several times. And so I'm going to leave you with that because that's how bad the pollution in our area, the planes and the factories are affecting our homes. I live off of Ferry Street and Wilson by Andrew's Diner. Thank you.
Garrett O'Connor?
I'm from Canada, man.
Garrett? Sharon Caraway Brown?
Hello, I'm not a very good public speaker, so you, I appreciated your guys' continued patience. I got some...
We can't hear you.
Oh, sorry.
There you go.
Thanks. Yeah, oh, yeah, like I said, I'm not a very good public speaker, so I got my cheat sheet here. My name is Greg Hodges. I'm a diagnostic medical physicist and radiation safety officer for Overlook Medical Center for the Atlantic Health System. And basically, the story I want to share at the request of my son is where we used to live in Virginia. It's a cautionary tale about how in Pennsylvania County, one of the most economically depressed parts of the state, lies the third world's largest deposit of unmined uranium. And it's estimated to be several billion dollars, money that the mining company had promised to share with the state as part of being able to reinvest into the community. And there was an assessment done to show that the mining could be done safely with minimal impact to the community. But unfortunately, those assessments were based on best-case scenarios and not what was likely. And I know this because I worked for the consultant company to help put those assessments together. In the end, and I recommend you guys to, recommend to the department to look at this as one of those cases in point for consideration, that in the end, the, because the state did not have a environmental justice or protection law, the governor had to wind up stepping in and setting up a moratorium on mining for the state that I believe is still in effect. And if any of you've ever heard or been to Virginia, if you're familiar with Flint, Michigan, there's a lot of places, there's a lot of Flint Michigans out there that never hit the news because of stuff like this. So, so yeah, in the end, the governor had to put a moratorium in because of the possibility of the impact to the people as well as the lost revenue from a drop in property value. And so, I would like to issue to the department to caution in allowing exemptions for any kind of like jobs or higher state revenue because from my experience, that can potentially be abused. So I want to thank you guys for your time and, and exceptional patience listening to us tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hello, good evening, everyone. How are you?
Good evening.
And thank you for the panel for having us. My name is Shari Brown and I am a canvasser for ICC and I'm also a parent of three living here in Newark, New Jersey. And I'm not really going to piggyback off of everyone else, but I am. Quality of life is very important in New Jersey. It's a no-brainer. Certain things in life is a no-brainer. You wake up in the morning, you have a routine, you brush your teeth, you wash your face, you get dressed, you go to work, you make an income, you survive. How can we survive in a community where it is being diminished by our quality of life? You cannot live without air, you cannot live without water, you cannot grow quality food and soil that is polluted. We just cannot. And it is important that developers be held accountable for the amount of pollution that they are dumping in our air, in our soil, in our water. Newark, New Jersey has an airport, it has a port, it has a rail. All of those things and the manufacturers and developers around them are polluting our air, our children. We cannot go to the hometown of these developers and come with our ideas and put our corporations and our buildings and our manufacturers by their schools, by their hospitals, by their churches, in the backyard to their home and dump all of this pollution. It simply will not happen. It simply will not happen. They need to be held accountable. This law needs to be stronger, not just the bare minimum. They need to put a cap on how much pollution they are putting in our air and our soil and our water. Our generations will not be able to survive if their quality of life is not enhanced. This used to be a beautiful place. New Jersey was inhabited by Puritans in 1666 from the Native Americans. This was a beautiful land, and yet the land is being destroyed. And this is a land not, not just black and brown people have to live in, black, brown, Caucasian, yellow, red, purple, blue, whatever the future is going to be, our generations need to be able to live here together. If the developers cannot live here with us, drink our water, bathe in that hard... bathe in that hard water that is being calcified by hard minerals that is being deposited in that water, eat from the same soil that we are eating, let their children go to our schools and breathe this toxic air after 5:00 PM every day, McCarter Highway. You have to put on a mask, not from COVID, not from viruses, but from toxic waste that we inhale. You come to McCarter Highway after 5:00 PM, you're going to be like, "My God, what is that smell?" And that is all those factories that are just depositing that into our ears, into our lungs, into our arteries. It causes calcification and hardening. Hold them accountable, the same way when our families have to go down to Newark Emergency and ask for funding for housing, they give you a long list of qualifications, a long list, and you might not be qualified to get hot, funding to be placed in housing if you don't qualify. They need to have a long list and they need to be held accountable. Thank you. Y'all have a blessed day. Health is better than wealth and that's for all of us in this room. We cannot live without air. God bless.
Thank you, ma'am. Matt Polsky? Matt Polsky? Jeremy Sin, Sinaglia? Sinaglia?
Hello, my name is Jeremy Sinaglia. That is spelled J-E-R-E-M-Y-S-I-N-C-A-G-L-I-A. Oh, right. Now, I also wrote a script, so here it is. Okay. So, I drove 40 minutes from Edison just to be here because I wanted to defend environmental rights. I heard that was going on here. So, and before I get started, I want to thank all of the environmental justice leaders that I saw out here today. Like, that was really encouraging to see. That gave me a lot of joy in my heart. So thank you for coming out here and everyone else who spoke out to, to defend the environmental justice law. Anyway, I'd like to say that I do not support any economic exceptions to the environmental justice law in any way or form. And I think to do so would be a violent affront to the good people in this room, the people that were in this room, who are part of this community and members of the state of New Jersey as a whole. In fact, I think we need to make more environmental justice laws and defend them fervorously. A climate crisis is upon us and we need to take it seriously and continue to take it seriously. We must prioritize the quality of life of our people rather than the profit of the few special interests. And also, frankly, I had a hard time walking up the hill on my way here. And I don't even have asthma. I'm not even from Newark. This is my first time here. And I don't want to imagine what that would have been like in a city without any environmental protection whatsoever. So, please make this bill the best that it can be. And that's all I'm prepared to testify for. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Varia Hodges?
I'm impressed you got that on the first try.
Oh, thank you, despite the poor writing by my colleague.
All right. Everyone else has given great speeches, so let's hope I can follow up. Something we need to make clear. What is happening with the pollution in this city is violence. It is violence when people are denied drinking water because the water is not safe. It is violent. Isn't it not violence when children get asthma because of the lack of clean air? This is, what's happening is violence against my generation, the young and all the generations that are happening after, after mine. We've seen earlier the children testifying about their environments being destroyed and their homes being unlivable. This is violence against our future. And the people to blame are the companies who are refusing to make their, to conduct their business in a way that does not destroy our environment. Someone, someone earlier stated that we have the science and technology to not, to basically have economic benefits and not destroy the environment. So why aren't we? Because the companies that choose to pollute do so willingly because it is quicker to make a quick, they can make a quicker, a quick buck and don't, and don't care about what happens to this community. It is their duty to be, to make their businesses in compliance with the environmental law and not destroy our environment. To the union members earlier who are no longer here, I want to say this. Environmental regulations are not your enemy. We are not your enemy. The, it is the companies who are willing to sabotage your, your children's future. And a company that's willing to do that does not give a damn about you. That is all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Nelson Lenahan? Nelson?
Hello, my name is Nelson Lenahan. That's N-E-L-S-O-N-L-E-N-A-H-A-N, pronouns he/him. So my background is in environmental science and shipping. I graduated from a shipping academy in New York and started working on large cargo ships. Usually, the cargo ships are row-row ships, so ships that would bring cars from different countries around the world. Now, some of the things that I, I wanted to, to talk about was that, in regards to the economic loophole, so to speak, it's already there. The ships that, you don't even have to write in a loophole. Ships will find loopholes and I can guarantee that. Every industry will find a loophole. So writing in protections against this is very necessary. The airline industries are already finding loopholes and trucking industries will find even more loopholes to already, to exploit their already exploited workers and people and communities that they drive around in. On the ships, we work through, for my company, we work through unions. So for the people who claim that jobs will be there only if economic loopholes are written in and not closed, I respectfully disagree with them and disrespectfully disagree with them. Because we need to make sure that it, it's not written in because the jobs will always be there. And if we provide room for green legislation to come up, then the economic prosperity will start to blossom from there. The only other thing that I have to add is, how much is a life worth?
Thank you. Victoria Marples?
Hello, my name is Victoria Marples. I was both an architecture student and then I was an architecture manager for 10 years. So I actually worked with a lot of people who left within like, you know, an hour of this meeting. I think we, one is, we shouldn't have exceptions. But rather, I thought of an idea of, instead of transition period, instead of having these exceptions, you could say, "We want certain amount done within 50%, like 50% done within a certain amount of time." So there could be a transition period of time. And then also, so many times in the industry, architects, engineers, construction workers, they're all battling each other. And it's very frustrating because they, they could work together, right? They have the chamber, the Greater Chamber of Commerce, right? They have all these other different events that could work together that can actually inform you guys on what can be done immediately. Like, what can be done in that 50%? And maybe while considering this law, just an itemized, at the end of the day, they just look at the cost, right? So maybe even showing them like, "This is the cost. You know, this is what can be done with this, this time and these are, you know, tangible things." So that they know that we're not just attacking them, you know? And I think. Yeah, like a little long-term. And I think on both sides, nobody in this room wants less jobs. We just want safe jobs at the end of the day and it's going to help both sides. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave Pringle. Very graciously waited until after the community members had spoken. Dave, floor is yours.
Thank you again, David Pringle. First, I want to thank the four of you. I know you've worked really hard on this rule. And your work speaks for itself and four hours in and no break, that's impressive. I'm with Clean Water Action, Empower New Jersey. I have worked for 30, over 30 years for environmental justice in my professional life. As Maria said earlier tonight, this law is awesome. Plagiarizing this rule is awesome. It's also pathetic. It's taken this long to get this far and it's still not nearly enough, but it's a critical start. And 30 years is really nothing. Nancy Zach and Arnold Cohen left, they were sitting over there a little while ago. When I started in 1988, I was a babe and they were already veterans. And the Ironbound Community Corporation has already been working on this year for 50 years beyond, for 50 years now. Here, lots of concern about jobs. Labor, I want to thank you. Oh, that's right, you left the room. I'm sorry, my bad. We all care about jobs. Ray, really want to thank you for staying to the end. I actually was impressed, he stayed a little longer than normal. He represents BIA, the Unoverburdened Community, very well. It's ironic, kind of funny, not. In 1991, I was introduced to Ray as a real environmental leader. I guess times have changed. Economically, socially, we get it. Income, family, living wage, who doesn't want all that? But in labor negotiations, fair is fair. To that end, how many of the economic reps here today and folks that would get the jobs that live in, live in the Ironbound, South Ward of Newark, South Camden, Patterson, North Trenton, Lowdy, Elizabethport, Greenville section of Jersey City, those are the overburdened communities. That's what this rule is there to protect. As opposed to those that live in Hillside, Cranford, Maplewood, South Orange. If you want the jobs from these polluting projects, put them in your communities. And next up, as this law isn't nearly enough, we need to get after warehouses, we need to get to highways, highways, so here we come. And yeah, am I getting personal? I am. But this is personal. People will die or not depending on how strong this rule is. It was personal this weekend. I was in Florida, visiting family, and they don't get it. They don't get COVID, they don't get environmental justice. They think DeSantis is great because he's not protecting people. This law is protecting people and we absolutely desperately need to do that. In closing, Monday, two days ago, was the 50th anniversary of when the free media exposed the Tuskegee experiments. What is that? The federal government experimented on black men, victims of syphilis, withholding lifesaving treatment, something as simple as penicillin. For 40 years, they did it. They denied it after it was exposed. Once it was exposed, within a month or two, they pulled back the project. No wonder fewer people of color are vaxxed and they don't trust government. I saw it here tonight. When I signed in, there was a gentleman unwilling to give his phone number and email address to you because he doesn't trust government. Help us build trust. Define compelling public interest the way you should. No economic exception. Thank you for your work.
Thank you, Dave. We have five minutes. Time for anyone who has not had an opportunity to comment that would like to comment further. All right, seeing none. I am going to call this meeting to a close. I want to really deeply thank you all for coming. I'd like to especially thank our hosts at NJIT, especially those two gentlemen in the back who stayed an extra two hours. I hope we get overtime. And our, and our videographer. Thank you so much. Have a good night, everyone.